Twenty-one, this is regular meeting of the Springfield City Council. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Counselor Edwards?
Present.
Present. Counselor Letterman?
Present.
Present. Cun- Counsel Gomez?
Present.
Present. Counselor Allen?
Present.
Present. Counselor Curran?
Present.
Present. Counselor Whitfield?
Present.
Present. Counselor Ramos?
Present.
Present. Counselor Brown? Absent. Counselor Walsh?
Present.
Present. Counsel Dabila? Absent. Counsel Fenton?
Present.
Present. Counsel Hurst? Present. Counsel Williams?
Present. Thank you. Will the council and our guests please rise for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Counselors, are there any reports of committee this evening?
I have a report of committee.
Yeah, sure. Madam VP, if you can just, uh, Madam Clerk, can you please recognize Counselor Brown?
Counselor Browns?
Present.
Present.
All right, Counselor Whitfield.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, so today we had a finance committee meeting. In attendance was were Counselor Curran, yourself, Mr. President, Counselor Hurst, Counselor Gomez, Counselor Dabila, Counselor Allen, Counselor Fenton. I appreciate all of you being in attendance. Um, we talked about all the financial orders that we will see in this meeting, so I will not go over them all individually, but they were all accepted by the committee. Um, there was, um, one that I did want to highlight, and it was a Chapter Ninety funds to improve the, um, two-point-seven million of the three-point-six million will be going to, um, paving. And, um, there are six streets in different neighborhoods, which is great, and three, um, arterial streets, which are Chestnut, Fort Pleasant, and Pascal Road. Um, and I think that is the only one that I want to highlight at this time.
Right. Thank you. There, Whitfield. Madam Clerk, can you please recognize Counselor Dabila?
Counselor Dabila?
Present.
Present.
Thank you. Counselor Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. President. On March twenty-ninth, the General Government Committee met. We established quorum by the presence of committee member Gomez. Uh, also in attendance were city counselors Williams or President Williams, Counselor Hurst, Counselor Curran, um, Counselor Dabila, Counselor Letterman. Uh, there were several other people that were there as there was three items on the agenda. I won't read out all the attendants, but I'll simply say that they were representatives from the Thomas J. O'Connor, the local retail establishment that sells animals, as well as, uh, union representatives as we were discussing three different issues. In that meeting, we discussed the issue before us tonight, which is wage theft. And, uh, there was a discussion of the validity of what was being proposed. And we had our, uh, there was no vote made. Uh, it was just for informational purposes only. And I believe that it will be further discussion on that issue as it is tonight, uh, later on this evening. The second, uh, item that was discussed, there was an attendance, the owner of the his, uh, the proposed historic site on, um, forty-one Oakland Street, um, Mr. Stephen Hayes was in present. And the All Saints Church is now being proposed to be a single-unit historic site. There was a recommendation of the council that that move forward as well back to the general government. And the larger or more, uh, controversial issue was the proposed ordinance to ban the retail sale of dogs and, uh, cats and, uh, I believe rabbits in the city of Springfield. Uh, there was lots of testimony, uh, both, uh, mostly, uh, but in both directions in favor and against the proposed ordinance. Um, and it will, as, uh, stated earlier, related to another issue will be discussed further. Uh, but in attendance, uh, in addition to Pam Peoples and Hannah Ornstein, uh, from TJO, we also have Stacy Yober from the New England American Channel Association and several other people, uh, that I expect that may be participating in the meeting or later on at the time of that agenda items discussion. Um, it was a recommendation of the, and as a vote of the voting members of the committee to the committee of the whole that this item be considered and passed for second and third step tonight.
Thank you, Counselor Edwards. Counselor Walsh?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. The Maintenance and Development Subcommittee met last week to receive an update on capital projects from the Capital Asset Committee. Caffo, TJ Plant, Assistant Budget Director Lindsay Hackett, and Melanie from their office, and Peter Garvey, the Chair of the Capital Asset Construction Committee. In attendance were counselors Walsh, Letterman, Allen, and Whitfield. Uh, TJ Plant said that after fourteen years, the civilian dispatch center, an eleven-million-dollar project was completed, and now police and fire centers are linked. He also said for another example of a capital asset project that there's a four-million-dollar court square project. He told us in the meeting that there are over four hundred projects, and he suggested that probably it would be a good idea for the city council to have a committee of the whole meeting on all the projects because they impact all neighborhoods. Explained there's a ranking and formula for the beginning and completion of the project. I asked about the Campanile, it's still in there on the list, but they're waiting to see if perhaps there might be some federal funding. Uh, Peter Garvey said that now, uh, in his committee, the ninety-million-dollar Brightwood Lincoln Project is nearing completion and should be open in August. Counsel Letterman's capital plan proposal was for streetlight acquisition and LED conversion. Counsel Allen addressed issues concerning water shop funds and cleanup, and mentioned he has formed a committee to follow up this issue. Counsel Whitfield has concerns about the Berry School. Peter Garvey said that the completion, with the completion of the Brightwood Lincoln School, the Berry Homer School would be next on the list. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Walsh. Counselor Letterman?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I bring forward a report of committee for the COVID-nineteen Response Committee. Uh, the committee has held three meetings since our last regular meeting of the city council. Those meetings were held on March sixteenth, March twenty-third, and March thirtieth. And the two major topics, uh, discussed at those meetings, which were attended by the majority of, uh, city counselors at any given time, uh, and also by our, uh, Chief Financial Officer TJ Plant and his team, as well as the Commissioner of Health and Human Services Helen Colton Harris. Uh, the two main topics were neighborhood vaccine distribution and the, uh, funding that will also be coming to the city through the American Rescue Plan, uh, that was recently passed by Congress. On the neighborhood vaccine, uh, sites, the sites are doing very well. Uh, we are seeing them book up their appointments with Springfield residents, and eight-hundred doses a week are being transmitted now to the city, uh, thanks to the collective efforts of the city council, the administration, and our state delegation. Um, those appointments are able to be booked by Springfield residents on the city's website, the homepage. Right now, uh, the sites are Bowlin School, uh, the Senior Center, Ray Jordan Senior Center, as well as BHN, and the commissioner is continuing to open different sites as the data comes in. Uh, today, uh, eligibility was expanded to include individuals fifty-five plus across the Commonwealth, as well as, uh, individuals with one recognized comorbidity. And as of March thirtieth, uh, there are thirty-one thousand five hundred and one individuals in the city of Springfield that have received a first dose of the vaccine, and there are eighteen thousand seven hundred and five fully vaccinated individuals, making up about twelve percent of the city's population, Mr. President. Um, and then on the American Rescue Plan, we've been discussing, uh, the fact that Springfield is set to get, uh, at least ninety-six million dollars uh, in funds for COVID recovery, uh, but may get up to a hundred and twenty million. And so we've been discussing, uh, putting together, uh, some different opportunities for counselors to be able to have input uh, into how those funds ultimately get allocated, as well as for the public. And so we'll have some more information on that for counselors and a way that we can all get involved, uh, in those efforts in the near future. I would just note, Mr. President, uh, tomorrow, I will not be holding a meeting of the COVID-nineteen Committee, but we will resume, uh, next Tuesday. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Letterman. Counselor Hurst?
Thank you, Mr. President. Excuse me. The Audit Committee met on March sixteenth at four o'clock. I was joined by Counselor Allen, who was a member of the Subcommittee, as well as Counselors Dabila and Counselor Whitfield. The first item discussed was the findings of a Springfield Police Department compensatory overtime audit initiated by Caffo TJ Plant as a result of concerns over the accuracy of the Springfield Police Department's overtime hours that are accrued throughout one's tenure and paid out upon their separation from the Springfield Police Department. The Office of Internal Audit found that the recording process for overtime was manual and prone to errors, outdated, and the policies were con- were not consistently adhered to. In addition, there was an inherent added cost to the city because these hours can be earned at a lower rate and paid out at a higher rate when an officer finishes his career and has moved through the ranks. Mr. No's recommendations were that the Springfield Police Department research electronic alternatives as opposed to the use of manual paper overtime forms and to work with the city management to implement policies regarding the use and payment of overtime hours prior to retirement. The second item discussed was also requested by Caffo TJ Plant and was due to concerns over the accuracy of the Springfield Police Department's educational incentive program expenditures, uh, the Quinn Bill. The Office of the Internal Audit found that the Springfield Police Department does not maintain copies of degrees and transcripts for some of the employees. The educational incentive payments did not fully comply with agreements and that there were mathematical errors, Mr. President, in the calculation of ethical and educational incentive payments related to promotions. Mr. No recommended that the Springfield Police Department request and maintain copies of the degrees and transcripts for active employees that are not on file and utilize those documents when reconciling payment calculations. In addition, Mr. No recommended that the city work with the police unions to amend future contracts to include adopting the city's accounting policy and recognizing the education incentive payments. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Hurst. Counselor Allen?
Uh, thanks, Mr. Mr. President. I'd like to report on the Elder Affairs Meeting that was held, uh, a week ago last Wednesday, whatever that was, March twenty-fourth, I believe. In in attendance were Sandy Federico, who runs the Senior Centers, and Helen Colton Harris from the council. I don't have everybody here, but I believe we had Tracy, uh, Counsel Whitfield and the members of the committee, uh, Counsel Brown and Counsel Edwards. Uh, the main point of the meeting was to go over some of the existing citizen groups that, uh, the city, that the Senior Center already has. So tonight you'll see on the agenda a grant that we're asked to approve tonight, uh, for the Council on Aging. And that's a, that is just for the Council on Aging, uh, specifically for that. So we went through these different groups that, um, um, that Sandy kind of manages and, uh, that exist already to see if there's any changes we need to make or, or what we need to learn about them. So, uh, generally, the work of the Senior Centers has been enrolling people in the vaccine program and also being a site for vaccines, as Counsel Letterman just just mentioned. Um, and I've got lists here of Council on Aging members, uh, six people uh, or so, uh, Golden Age Club members, uh, and other people of, you know, through the neighborhood councils and civic associations um, of how they get involved in the Senior Center. There's a lot of interest in the Senior Center activities. Uh, I will be meeting with Sandy this week to go over a logical next step of informing everybody of what exists, what the mission is of each of those, uh, separate little groups like the Council on Aging, and where we fit in in terms of making changes and and helping to supplement and do interesting things this year to help our seniors, which I know everybody's interested in. So, um, doing up the minutes for this meeting, and hopefully they'll get sent around to everybody, and I'll take any suggestions for, uh, future moves. We had four different citizens volunteer, but we haven't named them to anything yet because we're just trying to figure out what there is, et cetera. Um, and maybe we may put out a press release or something at some point, uh, asking for members, but we're not quite at that point yet. Uh, a- asking for volunteers from from citizens. So, uh, our next move is for Sandy and I to sit down and go over this and see what the logical next thing to do is to support them. Uh, thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Allen. Counselor Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. Um, the Springfield City Council's Public Safety Subcommittee met earlier today at four o'clock. Uh, the counselors who were present, um, were the two committee members, uh, Counsel Whitfield and Counsel Hurst, as well as Counsel Curran, Counsel Allen, and Counsel Letterman, Counsel Dabila, and Counsel Gomez. Uh, there was one item on the agenda earlier today, which was the discussion of collective bargaining agreement for the International Brotherhood of Patrolmen's, uh, patrol officers. Their president, uh, Joe Gentile was present, as was, uh, Attorney Mahoney on behalf of the city. Um, there were some questions. Um, yeah, the the meeting was put together actually at the request of, uh, uh, the Union President, Mr. Gentile, who wanted to get a sense from the, uh, city council as to what we hope to see in the next collective bargaining agreement. Uh, there were some questions, uh, about the, uh, the ninety-day window to file complaints. Uh, there were other questions about, uh, assessments, centers, and, um, uh, Attorney Mahoney actually brought up a concern about whether or not we should continue this process moving forward. Um, I suggested the possibility of holding, um, meet a meeting in executive session uh, with Attorney Mahoney prior to any collective bargaining agreement. And, uh, he agreed to take a look at that, uh, as a possibility to, uh, in the future. Um, there was no vote taken in committee and, uh, no further action is needed.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Ramos. Are there any other reports of committee this evening? All right. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll to accept the reports this evening?
On accepting the reports, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Dabila?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Hurst?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Williams?
Yes. The reports have been accepted. You please call the first item on the agenda.
The first item on the agenda is being continued for the second portion of the hearing. It's eight oh nine Boston Road to amend an existing special permit for a drive-up service window.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there any other, uh, additional remaining testimony for this, uh, special permit?
Yes. Good evening. Uh, Jim Cranston here with, uh, Bowler Engineering.
Could you please, uh, state your address for the record as well?
Certainly. Bowler Engineering, three-five-two Turnpike Road, South Borough, Mass. Um, good evening. Um, we did share the, um, the letter that was provided by the planner uh, relative to the abutter's concerns, uh, with our client, and we also asked that they attend this evening. So with me this evening is Jeremy Zamowski. He's Director of Operations for this location. And also with me this evening is Allison Brickett, uh, Area Construction Manager for McDonald's. Um, we did look into, I I did look into some of the concerns on my end, but some of the other items, I think Jeremy will need to touch upon directly.
Mr. Cranston, you're on behalf of the petitioner, correct?
That is correct.
All right. And let me, I'm sorry, let me just pause you there. Uh, Madam Clerk, uh, have we received any other testimony uh, opponents or proponents of this special permit prior to getting to the petitioner?
No, we haven't received any additional testimony.
All right. Thank you, uh, Mr. Cranston. I apologize. Please continue.
Certainly. Sorry about that. Um, so the one item that we we, um, looked into was the the grease trap and the sewer issues. Uh, it turns out that we actually have some records that were provided to Phil Drawme. I don't know if he passed them along, but, um, McDonald's does service and maintain that four to five times a year. So there were some maintenance records that we provided. Um, in the last year and a half, it was serviced and and reviewed eight times, so not really sure what's happening um, on that front. And I know relative to, um, the site and some of the trash, I know that that was a concern in the letter. Um, the employees do walk that site multiple times a day to police it for trash. Um, and I know some of the photos I've seen, um, didn't really show any evidence of that, so I don't know if, um, if the abutter is here this evening to talk or how you want to proceed, but I do have, um, the Director of Operations here this evening, as you would ask for.
Uh, we can entertain his, uh, testimony if he is on the line. Could you please just state your name and address for the record?
Yes. Good evening. Jeremy Zamowski, and the address is, uh, twenty-six Ellen Avenue, Chicopee, Mass.
Thank you.
And, uh, I am the Director of Operations for Romanina Brines. And we are a locally family-owned and operated business that, uh, operates McDonald's throughout Western Massachusetts and, uh, through Connecticut as well. And I'll tell you that, uh, you know, being a good neighbor is something that we extremely pride ourselves on. And I know we do, you know, best to, uh, to keep our restaurants clean and around the community as well. Um, just to, uh, to mention what Jim was talking about, our shift manager required to do, uh, what we call travel paths, and that's when they do take a tour of the restaurant interior and exterior, and they do look for certain things such as, uh, trash. If there's any trash, they need to assign a person to pick up the litter in the parking lot. Uh, they also look to make sure that there's, um, no major issues on the property as well. Um, and, you know, they they do this several times, at least once every hour. Uh, they go through and they take care of that.
All right. Thank you, uh, Mr. Zamowski. Uh, Madam Clerk, uh, we've already, uh, recognized Counsel Brown, correct?
Yes.
All right. He's just joined us again. All right. Uh, is there any more, uh, questions from the, uh, for the petitioner from the council at this time? Again, I will ask, are there any questions for the petitioner from the council at this time? Counselor Walsh?
Uh, thank you very much. Make sure I'm muted. Um, as you can imagine, uh, last, the last time we discussed this issue, we were all quite taken back by the concerns of the abutter, uh, trying to get somewhere with a corporation like McDonald's. And and I wonder, since our last meeting, have you or anybody from the decision-making area of McDonald's have a chance to speak with the abutter? And is the abutter present tonight, Mr. President?
The abutter in terms of the last person who to provide a testimony, is that what you mean?
The last week, uh, when we got the letter about the the neighbor.
Headley, Mr. President, she is waving her hand to say that she's here.
Okay. I mean, I think it's important for us to know if if all those issues, those quality of life issues have been addressed.
Thank you, Counsel Walsh. Uh, we'll let the petitioner respond to the first part of that question.
So we are, we're here this evening to have an open discussion. It was my understanding we wanted to hear the abutter's side of of what's been taking pl- place. I know that, um, some of the items in the letter were certainly, uh, new to the operator. Um, some of the complaints relative to, um, the the backing up of the materials and and the sewer issues. Um, they were not aware of some of those matters. Um, so again, I I think that it was going to be an open dialogue to understand exactly uh, where the concerns were. Um, I know that McDonald's is not the only commercial building in that area, so I'm not sure where the trash is coming from. Um, I know the fence is in in good shape. I have photos of the fence I can share. Um, so I I'm not sure where the disconnect is, but we definitely want to work with the abutter and make sure everything is addressed.
But just to be, just to be clear for the rest of the council, uh, you have not approached the abutter before this meeting.
We have not. The the meeting was last, um, a week from today, which certainly, um, did not give us a lot of time, but it was my understanding we were going to proceed having the abutter present at tonight's meeting, which they are. So that's kind of what we're at, uh, this evening.
All right. Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Mr. Cranston. Uh, Ms. Headley, are you the abutter to McDonald's? If so, I did not realize you were on the call, and if you would like an opportunity to kind of just state your case, um, feel free to do so at this time, and please just state your address, uh, for the record, please, as well. And I'll get to the rest of the council. I believe you're muted.
Oh, okay. Sorry. I'm new to Zoom. I'm sorry. Hi, my name is, hi. Um, my name is Erica Headley. I am the owner of Eleven and Thirteen at Nacore, which abuts McDonald's. I'm not sure west, north, I don't know, but it's right here in my, in my, uh, yard here. So I don't know exactly. I do have some additional videos and things I'd like to add. Um, I have not had any contact with anyone at McDonald's any of the times that I've reached out. Um, I call the location directly and then transfer to, they tell me, call corporate. They can't do anything. And then I call corporate, who tells me the same thing I've heard, you know, oh, my goodness, this is horrible. You know, someone should be in contact with you. They never have. Um, since the meeting, the next morning, Tuesday morning, and every day since, there's been some type of construction, cleaning, new planting. Um, on Easter morning, someone was power spraying outside. So every day, it seems that there's some type of something going on. Um, four fifteen AM, I have a video. Um, my daughter was woken up on Easter morning, not only her, myself. I've still haven't been able to get my sleep right, of someone sitting in the drive-thru, um, the music blaring through the drive-thru at like, it was like four thirty, five o'clock in the morning. Um, just going, coming right through my house. You can hear the person talking on the, you know, loudspeaker, which from what I read from the ordian- ordinances, that's not any audible type of thing, should not be able to be heard from my front porch, let alone in my bedroom, in my bed while I'm sleeping. Um, the same next morning, I have pictures of them blowing the trash underneath my fence. I have a video. Um, I know the Boulder guy said that, you know, the fence was in good shape. It really isn't. There's a gap foot underneath the fence. He blew trash underneath the fence at the person I live with, who's busy. You could probably hear him. He's very upset as well. Um, but I mean, the person that was blowing the trash, we asked him to stop and he flipped me off, so I'm, I can give you more video. I have another picture of ten o'clock at night with the, you know, literal light flashing into my house. Like, I've, I've lived here, like, like I said, I've lived here twenty years. I've put up with it. As we speak, if you can hear, the McDonald's drive-through is going right now, and there's music blaring as we speak right now. To move that any closer to my home, after you've watched this video of five o'clock in the morning, would completely affect my whole life. Will not let me sleep, will not let my child sleep. I'm a single mother. I'm in college to get a bachelor's degree. I can't sleep with this. Not only that, once this construction starts, you're going to be using my street as an access point because nobody's going to shut down McDonald's. Um, I'm sorry, Boston Road, so you're going to be up and down my street, ripping up my dirt road. Who knows what else? I've left every, I I mean, I can show you additional videos that I have just from the past four days since this meeting, if you'd like to see. But I just, you know, I'm, I'm actually, I mean, I'm I'm visibly ner- I'm I'm nervous. I don't, I don't feel like this is going to help. I don't feel like they even care, and I've been going through this for twenty years, and I've called there. I've called. I don't want to hear that I didn't call, and it doesn't matter, you know? Like, I can show you additional video. The fence is not in good, I mean, I, I can't even sleep over this. So I I don't know if you'd like to see the additional videos or anything like that, but nobody's reached out to me. Nobody even cares. I mean, they're still doing stuff over there.
I believe that if first, first, if you are not speaking, I would ask that you please, uh, mute yourselves. Thank you. Um, Mr. Cranston, I am, I will give you the opportunity, since, uh, we did have a opponent speak, to to address her concerns, and then I will entertain, um, the council after that. So feel free, Mr. Cranston, at this time.
Certainly. So obviously, these are alarming concerns. Um, so I I feel like we might need to proceed offline and have direct, um, discussions with the abutter. The the two items I do want to address are location, um, we Um, we are not, and the plans prove this, but the, we are not moving anything closer to the property. We're not expanding anything. We're actually moving one of the menu boards further away from her property. So again, it's not changing the use, but we are in fact actually moving.
You're making two windows. You're making an additional option.
Excuse me, sorry.
So we are, we're moving a menu board closer to the McDonald's building. And then the second item is relative to construction. We would not be doing any work from at Nacore. Um, there's fencing there. Uh, McDonald's has their own site access. They've been doing this work throughout New England for the past three years, and they phase the work and they get it done while keeping the business open. Um, so we would not, there would not be any access through at Nacore. So I just wanted to answer those directly upfront um, to address those two, two matters.
All right. At this time, I will entertain questions for the petitioner from the council, Counselor Brown.
Yes, so I I don't know if you would be the the right person, Jim. But Erica, I can tell you, I can assure you that, that I care, and I know the council cares. Um, I appreciate McDonald's and the effort and the work that they've done as far as a upstanding business model throughout the country. Um, but with that in mind, I think it's really up to the abutter to decide um, if the quality of life um, is being affected. She is the one who would decide. Uh, when it comes to the cleanliness of the area, sometimes um, w- once an hour isn't efficient enough. And i- it's really not up to, i- it's up to the actual place and the, i- it's always different, and it's the people around. So if the people around are saying that there's issues, I believe those issues should be addressed. And what's kind of alarming to me is that I come from a business background.
Counselor Brown, do you have, do you have a question for the petition?
Yes. Why did it take you? Um, I I don't understand what, why would it take you not reaching out to the abutter? And 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 addressing their issue um, the next day? You you knew where they live at. Why did you not go and and talk to the abutter?
We, we, we shared the information uh, with our client, and we felt that an open discussion this evening was the next step. So uh, obviously, um, we're not there yet, so we can certainly do that. Uh, we're not, we're not asking you to approve this as is. Obviously, we're not there. So uh, it's an open discussion, and we will proceed in that fashion.
And I would just uh, really ask, what, you know, ask now, kind of ask and stress the fact, if you guys, if they could actually get together with the abutter and, and work it out to a point where the abutter is happy. The abutter has to decide if they're, if they're happy or not. Um, so if you can, are are you willing to at least uh, after ASAP, make sure that the residents in in the area are, is happy?
Yeah, we can um, reach out to Phil, or I don't know the best mechanism to get in touch with um, with Erica.
Yeah. Hmm. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. Counselor Ramos?
Mr. President, thank you. Uh, so a couple of things. I think uh, number one, we want to make sure, uh, because the abutter was not uh, present at the last meeting um, that uh, the city council did bring up um, uh, uh, several uh, concerns, several of us, part of the the concerns about the miss communication and and no communication between uh, McDonald's and 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 herself. Um, Mr. President, I I I have a feeling that um, you know, because we're uh, we're sort of going down the same path that we went uh, at the last meeting. Um, you know, I I think that we are, we all share the same concerns, and we're all appalled with the lack of communication. Um, I think it was prudent uh, of us to, in in the interest of time, because we have such a a long agenda, and I think that this is the conclusion that we're going to arrive at anyways. I'm a president at the proper time, and actually, if if, if you would accept now, um, I want to make a motion that we continue this item until we get a review of their current special permit. Um, I would ask that the code enforcement department visit the site location and report back to the city council as to whether or not they're in violation of the current special permit. I would also ask that the code enforcement department be in contact with the abutter about her specific concerns and report back to us uh, at the next meeting uh, before we take a vote on this special permit, because again, we want to make sure that everybody understands that if this permit is denied, um, this petitioner cannot come before the city council for two years. So uh, I make a motion at this time that this be continued and that the code enforcement department report back to the city council with their findings.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Ramos. There is a motion on the floor. It has been uh, properly seconded. Uh, but I also will recognize that there are two counselors, Counselor Davila and Counselor Letterman, who have their hands raised in the queue. Counselor Ramos, if you can just pause for one moment. Uh, Counsel Letterman, is it your comment on the question, or did you have a, I mean, on the motion, or did you have a separate comment?
No, I agree with Counselor Ramos, Mr. President. I'll yield.
All right. Thank you, Counsel Letterman. Counselor Davila, I will ask you the same.
Uh, yes, Mr. President. I could just briefly in- incorporate my my comments into the uh, into the uh, discussion with the motion. Uh, I do wholeheartedly agree with Counselor Ramos. I think uh, it's a good plan. Um, I, I would love to see the video that um, that the abutter is referring to, uh, if possible, uh, maybe, I don't know, that can be be provided to us, but I do think that's relevant uh, testimony to be considered. But I do have, so in order to do, feel that I need to do my uh, my question, um, I'm just wondering why, uh, is Phil on the call, by the way?
Yeah, I'm here.
Yeah, Phil, uh, Phil, uh, were the abutters notified of this special permit?
Yes, I believe, I believe as with all special permits, everybody within three hundred feet is notified.
Okay. Uh, all right. Um, yeah, Mr. President, I will, I strongly uh, uh, second and agree with Counselor Ramos' recommendation uh, as well.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. And there is a motion on the floor, properly seconded. I, I, Counselor Gomez, Counselor Gomez, did you have a comment on the motion?
Uh, yes, I do. And I I I just wanted to see what's the possibility to add to the motion that those videos uh, be sent to us, so we can take a closer look at what uh, the lady's talking about. Uh, I definitely would like to see if, if it's possible to amend the motion to add that piece to it.
Yeah, uh, Counselor Gomez, because the uh, hearings, if it is continued, will continue to be open. Um, then uh, the evidence can certainly be circulated amongst the council. So um, uh, an amendment to the motion wouldn't, is not necessary in that case.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Hurst on the motion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I just also would add that um, it would be uh, helpful prior to our next meeting, if the petitioner and Ms. Headley had a conversation to see if they can resolve uh, their issues and then report back to us. I'm not as concerned about code enforcement per se, but uh, to echo Counselor Brown's point, I think it's important that uh, some resolution uh, be arrived at, the issues that the uh, that the young lady in opposition to the special perm- permit has is critical, uh, especially for me, as I make my decision with this special permit.
All right. Appreciate that, Counselor Hurst. All right. We, a motion on the floor has been properly seconded. Uh, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll on, I believe, continuing the, the item is the appropriate term?
Yes, and I just want to let counselors know, I've been in contact with Ms. Headley. So I'll remain in contact with her and have her forward me all of her evidence, so that we can forward it to all of you.
Thank you.
On the motion to, no problem. On the motion to continue, Counsel Edward?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Karen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Williams?
Yes, the item has been continued. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is for a special permit for motor vehicle sales and service at one forty Corondo Drive.
All right, Madam Clerk, is there any additional or remaining testimony that you have in your possession, or is there other folks on the call here to address that outside of the petitioner?
Yes, I have additional testimony.
All right, please read that into the record at this time.
To the Springfield City Council, the East Springfield Neighborhood Council was contacted by the petitioner regarding a special permit for one forty Corondo Drive. We met in a public meeting via Zoom and Facebook Live. The project was explained and questions from the board and the public were answered. We did a site visit. We have received and carefully reviewed the planning staff analysis and agreed this is an appropriate use. Please vote to approve this special permit. Thank you, Kathleen Brown, East Springfield Neighborhood Council.
All right, thank you. Is there any other additional testimony?
No, there's no additional testimony.
All right, seeing none. Uh, are there any questions from the petitioner for the, I'm sorry, for the petitioner from the council at this time? Again, I will ask, are there any questions from the council for the petitioner at this time? All right, seeing none. Is there any further deliberation that the council would like to have amongst themselves before we move forward? Or any other deliberation? Seeing none, uh, the hearing is now closed. I will now entertain a motion to approve this special permit.
Almost.
All right, there's a motion by Counselor Whitfield, seconded by Counselor Davila. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
On the motion to approve, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Gomez? Counsel Gomez? Absent, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Karen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Williams?
Yes, the special permit is approved.
Counsel Gomez is back.
Counsel Gomez on approving the special permit?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The special permit is approved. Counselor Edwards under reason.
The specific site is in appropriate location for such a use, structure, or condition. The use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use to incorporate the planning staff analysis into decision as the basis of finding.
Thank you, Counselor Edwards. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll on accepting the reasons?
On accepting the reasons, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Karen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Williams?
Yes, the reasons are approved. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is for a special permit to operate a junkyard at two fifty-five Liberty Street.
And is uh, Madam Clerk, are there any other folks who would like to provide testimony for this item?
I did not receive additional testimony. Uh, the attorneys who were literally moving reached out to the council office. I called him back, but I didn't speak with him, so I'm not sure if he's on the call this evening.
All right, is there a representative from this, I guess, the literally establishment on the call this evening? All right, seeing that they are not here, uh, are there any questions for the petitioner from the council at this time? Counselor Walsh? Counselor Walsh, you're muted?
Yes, I hit the wrong thing. Um, I think I will address my uh, questions to our former colleague, Attorney Rafer Pellegrino. And you know, I thought a lot about this project last week, and I was really struck by uh, how excited the uh, Neighborhood Council was. And uh, what struck me was the opportunity for so many jobs, different kind of jobs, high-paying jobs. And I wondered uh, Attorney Pellegrino, if you, if you think, or if you thought, or maybe you have, about including um, our technical high school, Putnam, uh, which sounds like a new opportunity and many levels of of learning that might provide future jobs for our students.
That, that's a terrific, uh, terrific idea. It's something that we have considered, uh, included in our job fair, which will be done locally to recruit local candidates for the positions. Uh, will uh, be an effort to work collaboratively with the uh, obviously, the trade school, because it's a, it could be a beautiful marriage. So absolutely, I think it's a great idea.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Counsel Walsh. Are there any other questions from the council at this time? Again, I will ask, are there any other questions from the council or deliberation from the council at this? Counsel Ramos?
Uh, just very quickly, Mr. President, I just, I just want to say that it's uh, i- it's not very often that we see uh, these types of jobs, uh, job opportunities coming to our city. Uh, I want to thank um, you know, everyone involved for their uh, presentation to us uh, last week. And um, and 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 this is a, hopefully, a welcome addition to the neighborhood and to the city's profile.
Thank you, Counselor Ramos. Counselor Davila?
Sorry, Mr. President, I was muted there. Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, good to see you, Attorney Pellegrino. Uh, Attorney Pellegrino, just to review last meeting, I did post to you uh, if uh, the possibility of having a one-year review, at the time you said that will be, you guys will be open. Want to make sure we're still in the same patient there.
Actually, um, I'm glad you brought that up. Uh, I went back and and uh, addressed a couple of concerns. That is problematic, because there is funding uh, loans for this. And when you have a one-year review on a loan, it doesn't allow a bank to feel comfortable with amortization. On a special permit, I looked into a little bit further. I'm not sure that you already, if there, there are proposed conditions of which um, it came from the planning departments, which we don't have a problem with any of them. We only have one request. It's condition nine and ten um, for the timeframe to either be from uh, seven to seven, uh, seven AM to seven PM uh, on Monday through Saturday. Uh, no, none on Sunday. That's for production. And then retail would be uh, eight to seven PM, uh, seven days a week. That would be, it's only a modest change on what they're proposing. Uh, and those conditions, I, the company has to adhere to. Uh, or you have the rights, obviously, to come in and and revoke the special permit. Um, but so, just so I'm clear, uh, with respect to condition nine, uh, uh, pick and pull would like, if it, if this council is fit, to have it from production from seven AM to six PM uh, Monday through Saturday, not on Sunday. And then retail would be eight to seven, uh, seven days a week.
So that I'm clear, then, you're saying that the one-year review will be problematic for who, for the banks?
Yeah.
Okay, but, so you're suggesting an hour adjustment?
Well, no, no, I had suggested that before. I just wanted to clarify it, since I was bringing up conditions, I thought it might be a good time to.
Oh, okay. All right, no, no. Okay, okay. Uh, Attorney Pellegrino, I agree with you. It's a great. Uh, I think I was in the week. Uh, I'm still in the same position. I'm a little concerned with two items. One, the um, the noise, even though uh, you had mentioned that it will be like a muffle sound. Uh, and two, uh, the traffic. Uh, and two, uh, the traffic, uh, any potential traffic. I am thrilled that, uh, the company is, uh, uh, making a commitment for local hires. And I'm thrilled about the possibility of using public students. I think it's a good synergy there. Uh, but yeah, I think it's problematic because I, I am, I'm really thinking of that review a lot. Um, you know, only because, again, I feel is the only way that we can truly, uh, have the residents back if need be.
I understand your position, uh, without belaboring what we've already covered, because I think we covered it.
Right.
Just with regards to your two points, the first one, noise, there's one thing I neglected to mention last time. Uh, and I know this because we have, uh, treatment facilities up the, up the road along the railroad track. The tr- the trains are constant. The noise is substantial. And I understand that they want to increase the rail traffic, which will only increase the volume, which is far greater. I went back after the meeting and checked and, uh, uh, went over the desk, uh, desk full level. It's, it's ninety-five, uh, just to give you something analogous, because I don't think my analogy was good enough last time. Uh, garbage disposal is ninety. You're going to be almost three acres away from the closest person. So it's essentially, if I had a garbage disposal in the other room, uh, noise, I don't think, again, is the issue. I think that, that, that's a better analogy than I gave you last time.
Uh huh.
Second one is traffic. Um, the motor vehicles, registered motor vehicles had three hundred v- uh, vehicles a day. That is no longer there. Um, and the tractor-trailer, uh, school, which you've heard the neighbors, uh, complain about, the trucks lined up is presently operating. So that will be alleviated. There's no longer any, um, uh, registered motor vehicles there. So, uh, i- if you look at it in a cumulative approach, I mean, I think that, that, uh, that's how I would view any concerns. Uh, I, I, you know, I understand it, but I thought that information might be helpful to you, Counselor.
Uh, thank you, Attorney.
Thank you, Counsel Davila. Counselor Woodfield?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I, we did receive something from Rod Sitterly today. Um, we got a letter and we got it about one eighteen PM. So I don't know if you want it read into the record or how you want to handle that.
Madam, Madam Clerk, did you receive any correspondence through the city council office or directly to your office?
No, not that I saw. So if Counsel Whitfield can read that, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor.
It's now the appropriate time?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, it says, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Rod Sitterly and I oppose the car junkyard request for special, for a special permit. I received notice of the hearing on Saturday, March twentieth, twenty twenty-one, and attended the virtual hearing on March twenty-nine, twenty-one. This was the first opportunity for me to see the proposal and it only increased my opposition to the plan. I totally support the recommendations of the Office of Planning and Economic Development that the special permit, that the special permit not be approved. The traffic and congestion would be detrimental to the neighborhood. The company seems to have a successful business model. It is just being proposed in the wrong, for the wrong site. While the company may have, may create thirty jobs, possibly thirty or more, will be displaced at the existing Springfield Junkyards, which I estimate process five hundred cars per month. The granting of this permit will go a long way toward destroying the vision I had for the Thomas Wat- Watson Historic District and the Lower Liberty Heights Community. Respectfully submitted, Roger Sitterly and Sons, Inc. And it's signed by Rod Sitterly, uh, its president.
Counsel Whitfield, can you forward that to my email, please?
Yes, yes, I can.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor Woodfield. Uh, Counsel Gomez?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, what I have to say, our neighborhood in the Lower Liberty Heights, uh, is very excited about this project. Uh, I live close to junkyards here in the North End, just up the street from, uh, Chicopee, and the noise is hardly heard. Noise is very, very low. And that is a traditional junkyard, that what they got up there in Chicopee. So I don't see that the noise here, uh, will be an issue. We get more noise from the trains when they go by. Uh, the traffic within that, uh, packing company there, if this to happen, it's going to happen early morning. But nine o'clock, that area there is clear of traffic. And what I am in the community excited about is about the job opportunity that we're going to have to get some people within our neighborhood, within the veterans' community into those jobs. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez. Counselor Letterman?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Just relative to, uh, Counselor Davila's points on the one-year review. Um, and this is not, uh, it pertains to, to this permit in that it's being discussed, but it just also, in general, this is something that the council has looked at previously in terms of our ability to, uh, review, revoke, or hold accountable special permit holders. Um, and it's my opinion that we can bring any special permit holder in for a review at any time of the conditions that they, uh, have been set or on the reasons for the approval in the first place. So I, you know, just on that point, I think that we shouldn't, um, at any point relinquish our authority to do that. But I think that that authority is inherent, uh, to us as the special permit, uh, granting body.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman. Counselor Allen?
Uh, thanks, Mr. President. I agree with Counselor Letterman. The, the idea of the review is a good idea. We tried it on, on ArborTech, um, over on the Diamond Match site. Not sure we pulled it off like we planned to do it. But I agree with Counselor Letterman that we have that authority anytime. Not sure we need to have a special, um, you know, provision in this, or condition for that in this case. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Is there any other testimony or comments from the council at this time? Counselor Davila?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I guess my question is more to Phil, uh, Phil, I hear what my colleagues are saying, uh, and, uh, I'm going to take the, 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 I hear what they're saying on the, on the value of, of what is the comments. Uh, but if we don't put a special review on this, uh, in other words, who's going to be in charge of monitoring these conditions? Because we do have a lot of problems here that special permits are given out. And then we don't know what happened?
Well, I mean, code enforcement, who I have to say is, is doing a, a terrific job on moderating, uh, mon- monitoring, monitoring special permits would be the body, um, that would, that would review all special permits. It's my understanding that on a yearly case, the, the inspectors do go out to the sites and inspect that conditions are being followed. Um, and if there are issues either through the neighborhood with noise or traffic, uh, you know, those can always be brought to the council. I tend to agree with the, with the Counselor Letterman and Counselor Allen that, that a specific condition requiring a review in a year isn't needed. Um, the conditions are kind of always in place. And if those are violated in the future at some point, the council can always bring the petitioner back.
Right. Uh, so maybe either yourself, Phil, or maybe one of the other counselors can maybe give you a historical background. Uh, how do we decide which, which proponents get a special review and which do not?
Well, it's, I, I wouldn't call it a special review. I believe, I believe most special permits are reviewed through the code enforcement. Again, we have a lot of them, so I'm not going to stand here and say that every one of them gets done. I certainly know that for, for, for instance, used car lots, they are reviewed yearly because they are required to get a, um, a license through the License Commission. I would, I would, I would assume that because a junkyard requires a class-three license from the License Commission as well, that this would be one that would also trigger a yearly review by the code to make sure that their special permit conditions aren't being violated. Uh, I do know they do that for used car lots, because again, uh, you need a yearly, uh, yearly license for, to sell cars. So I would, I would take the same apply here.
No, I understand that, but in terms of deciding who gets one and who doesn't get a review, is that basically at the will of the council or is, is there some sort of a threshold guideline?
No, I think all special permits, again, I, I, I'm not sure I'm understanding the question, but.
In other words, how, how do we usually decide who gets a special review and who doesn't? The reason I ask is because we, I've seen others that got a review.
Well, again, that, that has been, the, the, the review that's been placed on a condition, on, on a special permit as an addition, is, is the will of the council.
Right, okay, okay.
You know, I've always had, you know, I guess at the end of the day, I, I'm always a little leery of those because I'm not exactly sure who, who's doing that and how it gets done and what happens if that review doesn't get done. So to me, I, it, it can get a little messy, but, um, I, I do think the, the code enforcement process that we have now is, 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 is doing a pretty good job at maintaining special permits.
Okay, I see, I see. Okay, thank you, Phil. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Davila. Counselor Letterman?
Uh, sorry, Mr. President. Just a quick question for Attorney Pellegrino. Could, could you review those, um, the request on the, uh, times again?
Sure. With, these are, um, the proposed conditions, nine and ten. So the first A is the production time. And, uh, pick and pull would request production time from seven AM to six PM, Monday through Saturday. None on Sunday. And then retail sign, uh, retail would be eight to seven, uh, seven days a week.
What's production? That's the actual?
Uh, uh, if they were to crush a car, uh, to crush a car, move the cars out to the site, you know, pick them up, take them off-site, things of that nature.
Now, there is a separate condition. You, it looks like you just want condition ten removed. Because, uh, condition nine says you can have production from various times. So theoretically, you could amend, uh, condition nine to be seven to six. Uh, but then condition ten specifies crushing within production.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we have a problem with that. I mean, I'm just trying to, uh, I, I, I'm happy either way you do it. I understand what you're saying.
Because I, I'd, I'd be inclined to allow for the, I'd be inclined to allow for, uh, the production time to change. I think it's great to have Sunday, have no, none. But I would want to keep, uh, the crushing of vehicles, uh, with the eight to six cap in there personally. That'd be my thought.
Yeah, it's, I, I, at the end of the day, that's a reasonable, uh, it, we're, we're, it's, it's very close to what the company wants and I think that's reasonable.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman. Counselor Allen?
Uh, thanks, Mr. President. Yeah, um, Attorney Pellegrino, just a question on the eight-foot fence. Are you guys in agreement with that, the way it's been, um, described in the conditions?
Yes. Yes.
And you'll do, you will do that? Okay.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you, Counselor Allen. Uh, is there any other deliberation amongst the council at this time? And I'll ask, is there any other deliberation from the council at this time? All right.
Mr. President, please, just.
Yes.
I couldn't get to the hell of a time. Uh, going back to the, uh, Attorney Pellegrino, going back to the hours, because I just, I'm looking at the conditions here. So you, for the sales, you, you want to increase one hour?
Uh, on? Yes.
Okay. What prompted it to, to, why?
It's, it's more in accordance with what they do on other sites and, and, and when they, when they, uh, believe that it would be most accessible to some people of work requirements, so that our earlier is helpful and our later is helpful. So that's the thought.
Including on Sundays?
Uh, well, weekends, uh, some people still work on Sundays nowadays and, you know, you still have work schedules. So I think that's, that's the goal. Um, if, you know, that's how I understand the, why the request is like that. I mean, I, I, I think just as a practical matter, if, if people weren't coming during that period of time, they probably want to close the operation, not pay their employees. Um, I, I, as I understand it, that's, uh, from looking at their fifty-three other operations, those hours make sense in light of when people can have access to this type of, uh, facility.
Right. And so just to echo Counsel Letterman's point, it looks like you want to remove condition nine A and replace it with seven A to seven P, excuse me, to six P?
Yes.
Sunday through Saturday, no Sundays, okay.
Right. Counselor, would you like to make that, um, that motion?
Uh, well, I, 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 I understand the logic behind it. Uh, I'm just kind of questioning if we can do, uh, keep the six PM Saturday, Sunday as it was, as it was pre-submitted. Uh, so I'm inclined to think Saturday, Sundays, AM to six PM. Uh, you know, particularly on Sundays, just to give people a little bit of respect.
All right, Pellegrino, do you have a response?
Yeah, uh, maybe I'm, I'm just, I'm a little bit confused and I apologize. Um, the Sunday, we're proposing no production. So there won't, there's no.
Sales, uh, I'm thinking of, uh, sales, because it doesn't. The junkyards, usually as far as I know, they're closed either earlier on Sundays or closed at all.
Yeah, I get, I might, my, this is, and, and I think, uh, what we're trying to get, this is a little bit, this is more like a retail operation. So it, I, I, well, I understand the terminology of junkyard, it's really more of a retail. And, and those are the proposed hours. And I just want to, I, I, I'm sure you know this, but this isn't, these aren't the hours we proposed. This is something that was proposed from planning. But it, um, you know, them looking at it, we're saying, okay, we're, there's a twelve conditions here, we're okay with ten of them outright. Two of them, we just are asking for my modest, um, adjustments. And, and I, I think I've given you the reasons. I, I, I mean, I can't spend it in my, our reasons anymore. I understand what you're saying, um, you know.
Pellegrino, thank you. We, we've had extensive conversation on this matter. Uh, Counsel Davila, do you want to put that in form of a motion or, uh, can we?
No, you don't.
Thank you, Counsel Davila. Uh, I do believe, uh, an amendment. Counsel Walsh?
Uh, I would like to put those changes in the form of a motion.
Second.
Uh, we have, uh, motion, Counsel Walsh, seconded by Counselor Edwards. Any discussion on the motion? Counsel Woodfield?
Yes, I'm sorry, Counselor Walsh or Davila, can you just reiterate what those changes are?
Sure, uh.
Sorry, I had.
The, um, seven AM to seven PM, Monday through Saturday, eight to seven, seven days a week. Uh, and no production on Sunday. Is that correct, Attorney Pellegrino?
Uh, truthfully, um, I think you gave me an extra hour, Monday through Saturday.
Yeah, yeah.
I wish I gave you an extra.
I don't know if it's like a test.
So is it, um, is it seven to six?
We'll fight you on that one.
Is it seven to six, Monday through Saturday, with no production on, on Sunday? And then crushing hours between eight and six?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, and then, oh, no, then, um, the retail is eight to seven, uh, uh, seven days a week.
Retail, eight to seven, seven days a week?
Correct.
Thank you.
Right, thank you, Counselor Woodfield. All right, we have a motion and it's been properly second. Uh, Madam Clerk, can we please? Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Madam Clerk, do we need to accept the amendments before voting on the item or can we accept it together?
We have to vote on the amendment and then vote on the permit.
Okay.
I just want to clarify the motion one more time. So the crushing hours, quote unquote, would be from seven AM to six PM, Monday through Saturday. And the retail would be eight AM to six PM, seven days a week. Is that correct?
Mr. Pellegrino, one more time, please.
Sure. So there's three categories, Madam Clerk. The first is production. And that time period would be from seven AM to six PM, Monday through Saturday, none on Sunday. The second category is sales, and that would be from eight to seven PM, seven days a week. And the third category, which is condition number ten, would remain as is.
Thank you, Attorney.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you, all, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll on accepting the amendment?
On accepting the amendment regarding the hours, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Hurst?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Williams?
Yes. Amendments have been accepted. Yes, amendments have been accepted. Um, if there is no further deliberation amongst the council at this time. Uh, none, none certain. I'm sorry, can I please interest in most not this time uh, to accept the special permit?
So moved.
Taken by Counselor Walsh and seconded by Counselor Davila, I believe.
Gomez.
Gomez, I'm sorry. And Madam Clerk, can you please call the role in accepting the special permit?
On approving the special permit, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Herring?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Woodfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams?
Yes, the special permit is granted. Congratulations. Um, counsel words under reasons.
The specific site is an appropriate location for such a use, structure or condition. The use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use to incorporate the planning staff analysis into decision as the basis of finding.
Counselor Edwards, Madam Clerk, can you please call the role in accepting the reasons?
On accepting the reasons, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes, excuse me, yes.
Yes, Counselor Herring?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Woodfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams?
Yes, the reasons have been approved. Um, Madam Clerk, if there is uh, can we please take items four through seven together, uh, which will be accepting the minutes?
Thank you, Mr. President, counselors.
Thank you, Rayford.
Yeah.
Item number four are the minutes from October fifth, twenty twenty. Item number five are the minutes from a special meeting on December seventh. Item number six are the minutes from a regular meeting on December seventh, and item number seven are the minutes from a regular meeting on December fourteenth.
You, uh, Madam Clerk, can you please call the role to speak?
On accepting the minutes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Herring?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Woodfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams?
Yes, the minutes have been approved. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next?
The next item on the agenda is the February revenue versus expenditure report.
Thank you. Do we have one present to speak to this? Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Patrick Byrne, City Comptroller, ninety Clement Street, Springfield. Tonight, you have the February revenue versus expenditure report. This is the eight month mark of the fiscal year, or approximately sixty-seven percent of the year is complete. Uh, there are two highlights on the revenue side that I'd like to point out. In the month of February, the city collected two point six million dollars in motor vehicle excise payments. This brought the year-to-date total to five point three million. Also, the uh, real estate third quarter bill was due on February first. The city recorded twenty-three point nine million in real estate and personal property payments in the month of February. On the expenditure side, the city had two major storms in February, one on the first and one on the seventh. This contributed to four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars that were spent on snow and ice removal. This, there was also a hundred and forty thousand dollar salt purchase made in the month of February. Um, that's all I have for the month of February. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Pat. Uh, are there any questions for Pat at this time? Again, I will ask, are there any questions for Pat? All right, seeing none, Madam Clerk, can you please call the role on accepting the report?
On accepting the report, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Herring?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Woodfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yeah.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams?
Yes, the report has been accepted. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item?
The next item on the agenda is a petition at Armory Street.
Is there any one present to speak to this petition?
Me, me, counselors, Chris Signoli. Uh, as discussed at the last meeting, I would ask that this item be removed and the D P W wants all the information received from the Butters uh, for the easements, et cetera, we will put it back on the agenda.
Um, can I please, I believe that's an a a motion to table. Counsel Letterman first?
Um, no problem with that, Mr. President. The same question I had last time, since this is a petition that was brought forward by some residents. Uh, I just don't want them to end up being responsible for additional advertising fees. So do we have that worked out in terms of the best way to uh, make sure that in the future this can be heard without uh, being any additional costs being incurred by the residents?
I I can't answer that one.
Well, we've been continuing it, and that that has, we we had gotten confirmation that that wasn't an issue. So I'd be inclined to just continue it again. And uh, and you just let us know when it's time to vote.
That that's fine with me. I know it probably will not at least be until June.
That's okay. My my motion then, Mr. President, would be to continue.
All right, motion uh, made by Counsel Letterman, seconded?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Edwards. Uh, Madam Clerk, can you please call the role?
Um, I have one question. Um, Mr. Signoli, did you want this to stay off the agenda until maybe you shoot me an email, ask me to put it on, or do you want it just? Just to just continue to be on the agenda?
So Sheena, that would be absolutely wonderful if we did that.
Okay, okay, I got you.
Thank you.
No problem. On the motion to continue, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Herring?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Woodfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Williams?
Yes, the matter has been continued. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item?
The next item on the agenda is a grant for the council on aging.
Is there anyone here to speak to this grant?
Hi, Mr. President.
Yes.
Deputy CFO, eighty Tamarack Drive in Springfield. Um, this grant is the annual council on aging grant. This is a formula-based grant, um, a federal grant which supports the council council on aging program which is delivered by the elders department.
Right, thank you, Lindsay. Are there any questions from the council at this time? You know, after any other question from the council at this time? Can I entertain a motion to accept the grant?
So moved.
Second.
Allen, seconded by Counsel Woodfield. Madam Clerk, can you please call the role in accepting the grant?
On accepting the grants, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Herring?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Woodfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila?
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Williams?
Yes, the matter is accepted. Uh, Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda? Oh, I'm sorry, actually, Madam Clerk, can you please call items eleven through fourteen together as those fall below our fifty thousand dollar uh, threshold?
Item eleven is a Parks Department into donation. Item number twelve is F Y twenty-one S A S E Safe and Senior Safe Grant. Item number thirteen is a Springfield City Lib- Library Donation, and item number fourteen is Thomas J. O'Connor Donation.
Thank you. At this time, can you please call the role to accept?
On accepting the grants, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Herring?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Woodfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Williams?
Yes, the grants have been accepted. Madam Clerk, please call the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is an order authorizing expenditure of F Y twenty-two, chapter ninety funds.
Is there anyone present to speak to this? Please state your name and address.
Good evening, counselors, Chris Signoli, eighty-nine Bennington Street, Springfield. Uh, at the end of February, we received notice from uh, the state of Massachusetts regarding uh, the upcoming fiscal twenty-two, chapter ninety funds to to the city. Uh, we are being awarded three point six eight nine million dollars. Um, what we ha- are proposing that for is two point seven million be used for uh, our paving program, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for crack ceiling, uh, traffic signal improvements, a hundred thousand dollars, and that's for materials and equipment, and in-house salaries of two hundred thousand dollars in addition, five hundred and thirty-nine thousand that we use for design work for various contracts, uh, design contracts that we do in the city. Uh, as far as the for the paving program this year, uh, it is a much shorter list than usual. However, the roadways that we're doing are roads that have been on the list for five or four or five years that have been put on hold, the utility work. Uh, so a lot of the longer and wider streets in the city, uh, we are ended up doing this year. Um, and just for purposes, so everybody knows, Artorial Streets, Chestnut Street, Fort Pleasant, Pasco Road, um, residential streets, Colonial, Gillette, Phalen, Hartwick, Atwater, and Clearbrook, uh, and the residential streets average, um, uh, you know, like a mile, a mile or so plus uh, for each one of them. So it's a lot, it's a lot of work, excuse me, about four thousand feet for each one of them. So it's a lot of work that we're doing on the residential streets.
Thank you for the report. Counsel Ramos?
Uh, just for the record, Mr. President, I will be abstaining from this vote uh, due to my role with the general court.
All right, Madam Clerk, can you please uh, note Counsel Ramos's abstention? Are there any other counselors with questions? I'll ask, are there any other questions at this time? All right, seeing none, uh, can can I please entertain a motion to accept the order?
So be it.
Uh, motion made by Counsel Gomez, seconded by Counselor Allen. Madam Clerk, can you please call the role in accepting the order?
On approving the order, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Herring?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Woodfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ramos abstained, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Williams?
Yes, the order is approved. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item?
The next item on the agenda is an order approving amendments to S P A agreements.
Is there anyone present?
Good evening, Mr. President. Uh, this is Attorney Thomas Moore with the City Law Department, uh, all in place, Springfield, Massachusetts. Uh, the two amendments proposed for the council's consideration tonight are to bring the terms of the existing contracts between the parking authority and the city relative to its towing uh, current and to have them extend to the end of the life of the agreement that the parking authority holds with its tow vendor. Uh, the agreement with C J's towing and the parking authority expires at the end of November of this year. So we will be coming back to the council for its consideration on new contract terms across the board uh, with a new round of kind of public procurement and competition to try to get a a good rate on our contract. So this is really just more of a housekeeping matter to bring us to November. Uh, so there's a first amendment to a lease agreement for an overflow lot on Chandler Street. Uh, and there is a third amendment to the towing management agreement itself, which again, will be set to expire when the parking authorities agreement expires.
Um, are there any questions? The council, Counsel Ramos?
Mr. President, thank you. Um, and I've been been thinking about this a little bit since the first time that I saw it on the agenda. Um, and and kind of going back and forth as to whether or not I was going to bring it up. Um, I think it's a it's it's relevant to the conversation. You know, when, um, the first of all, uh, I I I do have a couple of questions before I I get to my point. Um, how how long will the the agreement eventually be? And uh, um, uh, what was the process in the past in terms of selecting uh, the vendor?
Sure, uh, it's a good question. Uh, towing agreements are exempt from what would be called, we would think of traditional like public procurement contracts for services under, it's like chapter thirty B of the general laws. It has an exemption, but I think municipalities are really encouraged to go out and bid those contracts. So that's what the parking authority was doing as the city sort of third party conducting its tow business. As the council might recall, uh, you know, back in the day, the city did all of its on-street operations in-house and, you know, would do ticket writing and and everything through the D P W department. And I believe right around the time the control board um, was leaving, they came up with the concept that the they should out, the city should outsource that parking authority. So when the city did that, they instructed the parking authority to conduct a bid to get a contract for a, you know, a third-party uh, tow contractor to do this work and to essentially take the liability off the city's hands um, and be the the vendor for the city in contract with that towing vendor. So the procurement process has really followed that formula since that time. Uh, we've done, I want to say, two different procurements where C J's towing has won the bid. Um, the second, the last round we did was in in twenty seventeen, it was a uh, three-year contract with two options. Uh, we had considered not renewing that contract at the end of the year that came up in November. But with the market with COVID, it was kind of, you know, it it made more sense maybe to wait for for another year and hold fast. We did not exercise the option for two-year extension because it could have gone. We did not exercise the option for two-year extension because it could have gone out to twenty-two. But the way, you know, the way I tend to look at these is I like putting them out every three to four years. I think it makes good sense with the market. And, you know, you tend to get better prices when you bid that thing more. So that's, that's just my opinion. You know, some people disagree with the the process for bidding. Some people think it drives the price up, but, you know, I tend to think competition lowers the price. So that's that's really the way we've been treating it. That's the intention in November, or I should say, probably around September, is to put a public bid on the street for all interested vendors to come and try to win that contract. And then when that bid goes out and we have final terms, the spa would then be coming to the city and coming before the council to say, this is what we have. You know, we're redoing our contract with the third-party vendor. We also are redoing the agreement between the city and the spa that will match up to both the term and the compensation terms. Those two together, like they'll marry each other.
So give me some examples as to when exactly we would utilize the towing company. Other, I mean, the ones that I can think of are, for example, the parking ban, right? That's one of them. People who violate the parking ban will eventually get towed. If the police pull someone over and it results that their car has to be towed or they're arrested or whatever, then they'll get towed. Give me some other examples as to how.
Sure, yeah, those are two good ones for sure. The PD rights tickets that end up in towing. The parking authority also will do that where you'll have a number of outstanding citations. I believe the number is five outstanding citations unpaid and marked will end up in a booting and then a towing of your vehicle if you haven't paid off the fees associated. So it can come from just simple parking tickets. You can also get towed if you don't pay your excise tax. You'll get booted and then your car will get towed. That is also done through the parking authority and the police department. So I think it's, there are a number of scenarios that could result in you getting towed by the city. All of them are from the parking authority or from the police department. That would be my understanding of how that works.
And on average, what does it cost for, to the person that's being towed?
Sure, it depends on.
And actually, my second part to that question is who actually sets that, the amount?
Yeah, the towing fees are regulated by the state. They set a certain number that you can't charge above for these towing operators because obviously, you know, if you left it to the market, it would be wild and all over the place. So they sort of say, here's a cap. You can only charge this amount, and we've adopted essentially the max amount, I think, is a hundred and eight dollars for what's called a tow fee. That was originally ninety dollars. I think the last time we did this contract, it's gone up since then. But we do not set that. That is set by the state. So when they up the number, you know, it gets built into our contract and that becomes a request to the council. I think during the next round, it'll stay at that number because I'm not aware of any changes that are currently pending before the state legislator, legislature, excuse me. So that's where the tow fee comes in. But in answering your question in full disclosure, the costs for getting your vehicle towed really widely varies because it depends on a few things. One, what are the underlying, you know, reasons for you getting towed? Are you getting towed just for the weather ban issue where you have a single citation that's underlying? Are you getting towed for all these other ones that go with it? How long are you waiting to reconcile your bill? Because there's a separate fee for storage, the longer you leave the car in the tow lot. So it can get very costly if people don't kind of act right away and then clear their bill. But on the average, it's a hundred and eight dollars to get towed and your storage fee comes in. I'd have to check with CJ to exactly get that, but you're probably looking at, you know, a day of storage is getting you, you know, above two hundred bucks to get your car out and to get clear.
Okay, so I want to get to my point, but one last question. What is the, who sets the storage fee?
The storage fee gets set by the towing vendor at this stage. We don't set the storage fee. The fees that, under the contract that we set are from the city side. We have an administrative fee. It's really called the city fee, and it goes straight into the pocket of the city. There's no percentage sharing with any vendors or with the spa. And that's set at thirty dollars a tow. So the city does set that one. It would have the option to up it at any point or adjust it. And again, that's money that comes from every tow directly to the city.
Yeah, I'm interested in having a further conversation on that point.
Sure.
But, Mr. President, I want to get to the point that I wanted to make, and this is very helpful information. Thank you, Attorney Moore. Mr. President, I think that, you know, in this point in our history, you know, we've we are in the middle of a movement. Right, the Black Lives Matter movement took was front and center in twenty twenty, and it still is. And that has led to a national conversation about racial equity. And what we have, what we have done in the past and what we can do in the future to make sure that, you know, that we don't continue to pass laws that continue to have a greater impact on black and brown communities. Now, I think it's relevant to this conversation and relevant to what we're discussing this evening. And I thought, I thought about it a lot and whether, you know, what the next step should be. When we look at the legislation and we look at the legislative process, unfortunately, you know, whether it's intentional or unintentional, and oftentimes, more often than not, it's unintentional that we, as legislative bodies, approve laws or policies that have a greater impact, a greater negative impact on black and brown communities than it does on non-minority communities. And, you know, I've heard from several people in the city of Springfield, several of my constituents who have complained about the towing issue, you know, whether or not they have been targeted, whether or not they have been disproportionately impacted by, you know, getting towed, whether it's during a snow emergency or during, you know, a traffic stop. And the cost associated with that, the cost associated with towing, the way that they're treated during the process, I've heard that these, you know, and not all of them, but, you know, I've heard it from a lot of people who have had negative experiences with the tow truck drivers themselves. And the way that they treat the people that I've heard these complaints from. I don't know what the solution is, Mr. President. I just know that we need to have that conversation about, you know, how do we make sure that if we're going to be passing this and that and, you know, for whatever authority that we have when it comes to towing and setting the policies or the prices or whatever, that we have the conversation about how do we make sure that this does not disproportionately impact people of color in our city? I don't want to speculate, but I don't think it would surprise me if the the percentage of people who have been towed, both as a result of the of the snow emergencies and/or traffic stops are disproportionately people of color. And again, what can we do to make sure that the policies that we are passing and approving don't contribute to this institutional, institutional, structural racism that disproportionately impacts people of color? So I don't know if that's a conversation that we should have in committee. It sounds like there will be an opportunity to address this later on in the year. So maybe between now and then, we can have that conversation and talk about whether or not this needs, we need to accompany this with an amendment to legislation or policy to make sure that we're protecting the people of our city.
Thank you, Council Ramos, Council Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. My question is somewhat similar to Council Ramos's pretty much kind of a concern, but I was just curious with Thomas. When it comes to the selection, I understand that it's a bidding process. Is there a department where they keep a log or track of complaints as far as from the city, like a log of any issues or complaints that that's reviewed when they're actually coming to bid? Is there a law?
Yes, a good question, Council. The Parking Authority maintains a record of the complaints received for any towing actions because they're sort of the managing keeper of the contract for the city. So there is, there is a record of the complaints. I think the issue is that a lot of times when people get a towing experience that's negative, and let's face it, I mean, what towing experience is positive, you know, let's be really honest about that. Most of the time, you're getting your car towed, it's a hugely negative experience. So you do get, I think, a fair amount of complaints that never get to the Parking Authority, where they'll be made directly to the vendor. And people complain directly to, say, whoever the towing company, in this case, it's CJ's Towing. And that call isn't made to the Parking Authority. Maybe people don't often know that when they're getting their car towed, the place to complain is down to, you know, the person who holds that contract, which is Springfield Parking Authority. So I do, we do get complaints. We do have a log, but I do not believe that that is the full extent of the record of complaints. I think there's likely more that come, never come to my office.
Right, and I would just always wonder as far as your selection process. Say there is an organization out there that has something for bid, and then part of their proposal might not be financially as good as everyone else, but maybe they provide services as far as if it's an elderly person and they had a complaint, they can't pay it, that they would provide services like that. Are there any vendors out there who provide extra services to cover some of those needs where people might not be able? Because those are really like my concerns, like some of the people can't afford it. Is there something in place for that? Because there's a lot of horror stories that you hear, and that's pretty much, you know, my, is there something for elderly or people who just can't afford it?
Counselor, yeah, it's a good question. First, let me just touch on the first part which you said, which is when we do the selection process, we tried to get as much competition as possible so we could have leverage when we negotiate our contracts and we could get the most favorable terms. We haven't had the best luck in getting that competition. The last round, we did it. I believe we did two separate bids and we got one bidder in the end, and it was the one we had the previous time. And we had sent these bid directly to big, large tow companies in the effort to get more competition. It didn't result in what we were looking for. And I mentioned in the subcommittee meeting when we were briefly discussing this, you know, I have some plans for when we bid this again at the late summer where I'm hopeful that we're going to get bids from people who aren't part of large, large corporate groups or larger companies that may bear more to counsel to the groups you're talking about where they can provide excellent service, but maybe they don't have the exact, you know, financial backing or kind of lines of credit that are coming with the larger firms. At this point, I'm willing to do almost anything to have a lot of competition in this contract because I'm a firm believer that that's going to get us where we need to go. And as to extra services that tow providers can give, I can't speak to some of the smaller vendors. I really don't have experience with them. But, you know, the large vendors, you know, it's very much like you think. It's a business. You know, they're running it to try to make as much money out of it as possible. And, you know, things at times, you know, customer service can be an issue. And we do our best to get on the vendor for that. And we've had some frank discussions with the ownership about improving various customer service aspects. And that's a constant, you know, it's a constant battle. So I can completely understand and sympathize when people have concerns. There have been a few instances where there have been people who've had very difficult situations, and they came to the Parking Authority and I sought permission from the city to to use some discretionary authority to modify some expenses and bills and allow people to get some relief, and we've done. It just, it isn't something we do a lot of because in the end, you really can't do it for everybody. But yes, there is a room for giving relief to people who truly are in a difficult situation basically by no fault of their own. And I've had to do that on a number of occasions. So we do keep that door open because you have to be reasonable.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Mr. President.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Council Brown, Council Woodfield.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate it. So I just have to agree with Council Ramos. I've gotten the same type of complaints from constituents in the community about the service and the level of treatment that is provided by the named tow company. And I think that something definitely has to be done, and I'm hoping through the racial, the Civil and Racial Justice Committee that is being formed and probably announced by the end of this month, that they will be able to utilize tools that will help city departments to make sure they're making a fair and equitable decision when contracting with different services. I know that Public Health Institute and other organizations, I think Pioneer Valley, Planning Commission, or, yeah, I think Pioneer Valley, Planning Commission and others, they're working on a racial justice and health equity assessment that they're hoping the city can use to make a determination if, you know, different companies are, you know, equitable. And maybe that'll be a tool that can be used when making a determination for, you know, procurement processes. And so I'm hoping, Tom, that you and the other procurement staff and, you know, Theo, would take a look at this racial justice and health equity assessment. I think that it would benefit different departments along with economic development in making an equitable assessment of the organizations that are chosen to offer these services to the public.
Thanks, Counsel. And I also, I should have said this when Council Ramos mentioned it, but I think I would love to see and hear and receive those complaints, if it's possible, to send them to my email. I can get to work on connecting with those people and get some information because I'm always looking for more information about this contract. My negotiations are going to come up this summer. So I'd be very happy to hear any very firsthand accounts of people who have had say, like horror stories about their service there, the way they were treated, or what happened to them when they got towed and the days afterwards. That's important information that I very much want. And to the extent that I can be of service in righting some wrongs there, that's what I'm hoping to do.
And I appreciate you saying that because a lot of times we get the complaints and really don't know what to really do with them, but we hold on to them till meetings like this come up or something. So definitely appreciate you saying.
Parking, send it to me. Yeah, towing and parking, you guys send it to me. To the extent that I can be helpful, I will do what I can every time.
Thank you.
Attorney Moore. Thank you both, Counselor. Counselor Gomez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple of questions. First one, I agree with the situation in that Counselor Ramos was talking about. Taking in consideration the racial percentage in the city. It looks like more minority personnel will be the ones getting towed. And getting towed is not a good experience irregardless under what conditions because you're going to pay money. Now, my question is, what happens to the vehicles that the owners cannot, the amounts of storage has gone up so high that they cannot afford, they cannot afford the toll, but yet how can they sometimes afford that storage where they're going to lose their vehicles? What happens to the vehicles that are kept?
Right, so they're referred to as essentially abandoned vehicles where someone like you described gets a bill where it essentially puts the investment underwater and they just, it's not worth them paying off the bill to keep a car. It's not worth the money. So what happens is the car for a period of time sits and waits for somebody to collect. After that period of time ends, notices are sent out accordingly. The car becomes a part of the city's property and it goes into the line to get auctioned with the rest of the abandoned cars. Some of those are located on the Chandler Street Lot, which I referenced before, and they get liquidated by the vendor and the city receives a check for the proceeds.
What's the time period averaged that a car will remain there with you?
Well, I think under the current contract, it's a period of, I would say, a couple of years. You know, under the previous contract, it's been a lot longer. The previous vendors like to hold on to scrap metal and hope that the price went up. So we've had to address that under the last contract, and we've done, we've been pretty effective with it. So the overall stock of cars right now is much less than it was, say, five or six years ago. It's probably a third of what they had on the site. So it's a fairly regular basis. We leave discretion with the vendor at a certain level to wait to get certain prices because, you know, they are holding on to these and selling them and incurring some of that expense and you know, there is a certain give and take that we give at the vendor, but we do regular checkups every month. My managers are up at that lot doing the inventory and keeping track of what was liquidated. And there have been a few occasions where we've kind of given a gentle poke to say, hey, let's let's get rid of some of these cars because it's starting to stack up. So the answer would be, I said, a period of years would be the longest, a couple of few years, but not much longer than that.
A couple of years, and where do those cars are located at?
Most of them are located at the main lot. Yeah, the main tow lot for CJ's has stores most of them, and some are stored at the Chandler Street Lot, which is considered what we call the overflow lot.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez. Counselor Letterman.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I appreciate the issues and comments raised by my colleagues, and I do hope that we can have that conversation with the Parking Authority regarding everything that was raised and also, I think, taking a look at what the fines and fees look like. I think historically, this council has been very careful about proposals to raise I think historically, this council has um been very careful uh about proposals to raise those fees. Um, i- i- very much in the interest of what's been discussed and the impact to all individuals, uh especially those who might be lower income. Uh, so as Tom described, it's, you know, longstanding situation, not just in Springfield, but in many places where unfortunately, somebody might run into a situation where, um, you know, their car is towed, whether it's through parking ban violation or something like that. And certainly, we need people to comply with those, but um we we are all human beings. People make mistakes and you see a situation where someone loses their vehicle and then, you know, things can spiral from there. So I do hope we can have that conversation. But uh the question I had, Tom, just to make sure I understood what's being asked tonight, uh when we go to our vote eventually, um it sounded to me you're just looking to continue this contract now uh a little longer? Is that what I'm understanding? Because you haven't had a chance or just go through that for me one more time?
Yeah, well, you you know what it is? It's it's finally truing up all of the contracts at the same term. So the city's contracts with the SPA did not match up to the SPA's contractual term with its vendor. And that's now we're we've we've reached the end of the road of the city contracts. We just have to kind of add this amendment to get us to November. And now when we redo everything, they'll all be on the same time schedule and we won't have this happen again where we have this gap.
That's to the city's contract with the parking authority.
Correct. It's nothing to do with the original, the contract with the vendor, right?
The vendor contract all at once in November. Will will the city council ultimately vote on both contracts or only the SPA contract?
In a sense, you're voting on the SPA's contract with his vendor. The 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 SPA is the vendor of the city. So you have the authority to tell the SPA, we don't like that contract or that vendor and you're not allowed to hire them. So that is a part of the bid that we do, that the SPA does. So yes, you will, when you get the the contracts between the city and the SPA in front of you, they will mirror the terms of the SPA's contract with the parking vendor. So yes, you will be basically approving that contract.
So I think it may be valuable, Mr. President, for the appropriate committee um uh in in the very near future to have that meeting with uh with Attorney Moore and his team and start laying out uh some of those concerns early uh so that when the SPA does go out to bid um those types of pieces and also getting a uh ruling. Uh Attorney Moore happens to be our lawyer as well uh on uh what aspects of fines and fees are under our direct control uh so we can review those as well.
Sure, I'd be happy to help.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman. Uh, Counselor Davila.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. A fascinating conversation. Uh Attorney Moore. Uh but just to, again, just to be clear, what we are uh ask, what you're asking us to approve today is uh a contract uh memo, M O U, and this for the towing of cars in city-owned lots, not on the streets, correct?
No, it's for, it's it's two amendments. One is to the management for towing for on-street tow. So it would be something to do all on-street, right? So it wouldn't be involving any lots. Uh, the city-owned lots, uh you know, let's think about this. The city-owned lots would be towed by the same company, but technically speaking, they would be part of like management of off-street assets. It's technically a different thing, but it would fall under the same contracts. We use the same vendor for that. Uh, but the SPA manages on-street spaces in a different way than it does.
Okay. Because I thought it was only for the uh for the city-owned lots. I I didn't quite realize that it was actually for the on-street parking as well. Uh, now, you did say, I believe, during the meeting that we had the finance committee, that the revenue portion of the city, it's about $2.3 million, is that correct?
On the, in a good year, in a good normal year, on on-street revenue would pull in about 2.2 to 2.3. Yeah, I'd say that's probably right. I think we've been high, as high as 2.4 in the, within the last five years. But that, we're talking about a bonanza of parking where when MGM was under construction and all the parking from the south end disappeared and everyone had to come to a SPA parking lot essentially. So the numbers were 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 giant, but those, a- as I was saying at the time, those are not normal numbers and they won't be like that forever. So right now, if if I had to estimate this year's um revenue for on-street, I think you're talking about uh about 1.5 million, 1.6. I think I said that in finance. That sounds about right for this year.
But that total, that total give or take of 2.2, 2.3 uh that's combined between towing and meter parking. I think that's correct.
That's my understanding. Yeah, that's that's my understanding of that. I have to, I'd have to check with the SPA's controller to break down what was, what percentage of that. I wouldn't know off the top of my head. I'm sorry.
Okay, good. Thank you, Attorney Moore. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. Counselor Allen.
Uh, thanks, Mr. President. I'm looking at the clock. We've been talking about this for about 45 minutes. And Tom, I don't know if you, is this time critical, this issue?
You know what, Counselor, you guys, if you wanted to co- continue it, you certainly could. We've been running month to month on these for a while. It's really a question of we're getting to the end of this contract and I wanted to to match everything up because I knew that we're gonna go. It's a negotiation soon and I didn't want to have to worry about truing up these documents, you know, five months from now when we were trying to get a a procurement, you know, okay. So if you wanted to wait, you certainly could. I can understand and respect Counselor's time. Uh, you know, in the end, like I said, it's very much like a bookkeeping thing. We're, we're not changing any terms. It's the same terms as as we've been operating under for a while. Um, but again, I respect the Counselor's judgment.
So i- in the interest of knowing, we have one item that could be a long item coming up. There's about 10 items left and make a motion that we put this in committee so these discussions can continue there and uh before it comes back here.
Second. There's a motion on the floor um that was made by Counselor uh Allen, seconded by Counselor Fenton. I also see Counselor Ramos, the Counselor Woodfield in the queue. Uh, would you both be willing to support that before we move on?
Uh, Mr. President, I I do have a comment on the motion.
Please.
Yeah, my uh my comments are relevant to the motion. Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just just wanted to say that the the great conversation, uh great points that were brought up by Counselor Letterman regarding the fees and by Counselor Brown regarding uh the complaints. Um, I would, I would ask um whatever committee this is sent so that we continue the conversation around what we can do as a council uh to address those two items, uh the fees and maybe simplifying the complaint process. Um, whereas, you know, maybe maybe one of the ideas that we can entertain is whether or not we want to make a requirement through a policy or an ordinance uh that tow truck drivers uh identify themselves um and and/or that the vendor um display at their location um a way for consumers to file complaints, uh whether it's through a form or through a phone number. Um, you know, that's something that we should entertain, um uh making it easier for people to file complaints. Um, and uh again, continue the conversation around what we can do to uh to make these fees um fair.
Thank you, Counselor Woodfield. On the motion?
Yes, on the motion. I just wanted to add that we did talk about the rates in the finance subcommittee today. Um, and I did say that I would have a finance, um another finance subcommittee to discuss them further. Actually, Attorney Moore brought them up himself. And uh we said that we would continue the conversation in an in another finance committee meeting. So it was discussed in the finance meeting today. I'm more than happy to have another meeting. As far as the complaint process, um when we had the civil and racial justice subcommittee meeting, that was one of the things that we said that we wanted to do. We wanted to have a process where you can file complaints um outside of police department complaints through that committee as well. And so some of these um topics have been brought up and addressed previously. Um, but I am certainly willing to um put, have another finance subcommittee meeting to um do a deeper dive into, and to both, actually. Um, I can have one through the civil rights um committee and then I can have the other one through the finance committee and I can schedule, schedule those in the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Woodfield. Counselor Allen.
Uh, that was for after this vote, uh, Mr. President.
All right, uh, so uh there's been a motion made and properly seconded. Uh, Madam Clerk, can you please call the role on continuing, or I shouldn't say sending this back to committee?
On sending the item to committee, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Woodfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams?
Yes, the item has been sent back to committee. Uh, Counselor Allen.
Uh, thanks, Mr. President. Without objection, I would suggest uh that we take item 25 um at this point. That's an unusual motion for me to make.
That's why I'm a little stunned.
I know, I I know. I just.
Um, without objection.
Well, I'm gonna object because um there's other items that we can just finish real quick um and then we'll circle back to item 25, so I'm gonna object on that.
Wait, so we will review as is? Uh, Madam Clerk, can you call, please call the next item?
The next item on the agenda is an order approving a memorandum of understanding with the Springfield Business Improvement District.
Counselor Allen? Did, oh, I'm sorry, that was for the last item.
Yeah, that was for the last one, yeah.
Is there anyone present to speak to this item?
Yes, Mr. President, Tim Shan, 26 Eckington Street, Springfield. I believe Chris Russell, the executive director um uh of this, the bid is also in attendance at the meeting. Um, counselors, uh, the city has extensive real estate assets within the bid district and directly benefits from the activities and work uh of the bid, but is exempt from the fees of the bid. Uh, this M O U recognizes the city's desire to support the bid. Uh, but we have negotiated with the bid the specific efforts the city wants to support and how we will engage with the bid uh to ensure that those objectives are realized over the term of the M O U. The M O U has a two-year term and it has a value of $150,000. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Tim. I have a question from the council at this time. Again, I will ask, are there any questions from the council at this time? Seeing none, I will now entertain a motion to approve this item. So moved. Second. All right, item has been motioned by Counselor Woodfield and seconded by Counselor Fenton. Uh, Madam Clerk, can you please call the role in accepting the order?
On approving the order, Counselor Edward?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yeah.
Yes, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Woodfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams?
Yes. Item accepted. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is entitled amending chapter 67 by, 67 by adding new article.
All right, this ordinance is on for first step. Uh, is there anyone to speak to this item? Counselor Letterman?
Thank you so much, uh, Mr. President and colleagues. Uh, before you, it is an ordinance um that is actually a year in the making. Uh, I wanna start by really thanking and recognizing the current poet laureate of the city of Springfield, Magdalena Gomez, uh who many of you heard from during the speak-out uh portion. And when Magdalena was um appointed the second poet laureate uh ever in the city's history last or two Septembers ago, uh we had had a conversation about all of the work that she has done with youth in the city of Springfield and specifically empowering and connecting youth through the arts and through poetry. And i- in that same uh idea and in that same spirit that Magdalena has worked in, she had asked me about the possibility of establishing a youth poet laureate in the city of Springfield. The poet laureate itself is established in ordinance, an ordinance that was brought forward previously by our former counselor, a city counselor, Tim Rook, that Magdalena had actually worked on with him. And so we thought it was a fantastic idea and we had planned to do it uh in April of 2020, uh which is National Poetry Month. Unfortunately, we all know, at that time, we were in the early throes of the COVID-19 pandemic and and this body uh had turned its full attention to uh pandemic matters. Uh, however, I I spoke with Magdalena this year about the possibility of bringing it forward now that we uh resumed some regular business, albeit in virtual form. And I think that this is an opportune time to do it for the exact reasons that Magdalena and two of her uh individuals' youths that she has worked with testified earlier during the public speak-out, uh Andrew Torres and Ilhan Braxton. Um, especially as we find ourselves in this time when I think we so need an uplifting moment um in our community and also because of the power uh of poetry and the arts that i- in terms of addressing all of the things that our society is facing uh today. So this ordinance would establish a youth poet laureate to be appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council. That individual would be uh no more than 21 years of age at the time of their appoint- appointment and it instructs uh the mayor to make that appointment in consultation with the current and former poet laureates of the city of Springfield. Uh, so thank you for your consideration, certainly a welcome and hope uh to attract cosponsors for the ordinance. Um, we'll add, of course, that the, as with the poet laureate, the youth poet laureate is also a honorary title. Uh, so no compensation is is uh assumed by the city of Springfield. However, we uh have not barred them from receiving compensation because in the future, we'd like to work perhaps with the Springfield Cultural Council or another entity uh to perhaps find some grant funding to support the work of the youth poet laureate as that has occurred in in other communities. And certainly, it's important to compensate our community's artists for their hard work and diligence. So thank you very much for your consideration tonight. Hopefully, we can see the youth poet laureate uh become a position in the city of Springfield and be appointed alongside of the poet laureate on every two-year term.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman. Counselor Woodfield.
Thank you, Mr. President. I actually had to um research poet laureate because I didn't know what it was, but I think it's a great program to have a youth poet laureate in the community. I actually was gonna ask about compensation and since you answered that, I am all set and I would like to be added as a cosponsor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Woodfield. Counselor Brown.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I want to commend uh Counselor Letterman for bringing this forward. Um, I believe, I I I mean, I hopefully I'm on as a cosponsor. Um, it's kind of difficult because my colleague is so active and he always brings good things um forward. I could be saying that because it's his birthday, but um I commend you on bringing this forward. It's something that's readily needed and I'd like to be added as a cosponsor and I'd have you belated, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. Are there any other questions at this time? Again, I will ask, are there any other questions at this time? Seeing none, I will now entertain a motion to pass first step tonight.
Motion to pass first step tonight.
Made by Counselor Edward and seconded, I'm sorry, repeat that?
Go ahead. Motion.
Seconded by Counselor Gomez. Uh, Madam Clerk, can you please call the role on passing first step?
On passing first step, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gomez? Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Woodfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams?
Yes, the ordinance has passed first step. Uh, it will be sent to the general government subcommittee or whatever respective subcommittee that will uh take that up. Uh, Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is amending chapter 82, adding a new article.
Anyone present to speak to this item? Counselor Letterman.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, Mr. President and colleagues. Uh, before you is a piece of legislation uh proposed by myself as well as President Williams, Counselor Edwards and Counselor Ramos. And this is a piece of legislation that would build upon uh the two ordinances that were put in place by this body several years ago, uh the TIF ordinance and the H G I P ordinance, which includes specific language uh to ensure that contractors who are working on public projects or projects that include any sort of public financing or tax breaks are not engaged in wage theft of their employees or in misclassification of workers. Uh, Counselor, $700 million a year is estimated to be stolen uh from workers across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts by employers who withhold final pay, who don't pay for hours' work or don't pay proper prevailing wage or overtime. And what this ordinance seeks to do is ensure that on all municipal construction contracts uh that the contractors that are being brought on uh to a, you know, carry out that work and the subcontractors are properly classifying their employees, paying their employees for hours' work and that they are not in, on private, other private projects engaging in wage theft either. Uh, so what this ordinance would do is ensure that those contractors signed an attestation uh that they have not uh been cited by the attorney general or any court for wage theft in the last five years but also require them to submit certified payroll and logs to the Construction Monitoring Committee. but also require them to submit certified payroll and logs to the Construction Monitoring Committee, which in Springfield is the REO and their compliance officers to make sure that all hours are being paid and would also ensure that those individuals are monitored during the construction process. What this is really about is ensuring that taxpayers in Springfield know that no one is cheating with their tax dollars and sending a clear message that the city of Springfield has a zero tolerance policy when it comes to wage theft and setting an industry standard here in the Commonwealth. So I'm hopeful, councillors, given that we only have this one regular meeting this month that we might pass first step on this ordinance this evening and send it to the General Government Committee for another meeting. We did hold an informational General Government Committee meeting with the help of Counselor Edwards last week and we had some testimony from Carpenter's Local Three Three Six, which had submitted a letter of support this evening. We also received a letter of support from the area Labor Federation. And we also had procurement present on that call or that meeting with Counselor Edwards last week who indicated, and I won't speak for them, but essentially indicated this was in line with their current practices and should be able to be assumed in that nature. But certainly, we would have them present at any General Government Committee meeting if we are able to pass first step this evening. Finally, I would just like to thank Attorney Tom Moore for his assistance in crafting this ordinance. I think that he was able to take a look at what some other communities have done, including East Hampton, Worcester, Boston, that have passed similar ordinances and make it work here in the city of Springfield. And finally, I would also say, this really builds upon the excellent work of the REO that of course Counselor Edwards and all so many councillors here have been able to engage in, really expands that as well. So that is the ordinance before us. I would like to ask for councillors to consider passage of first step this evening, given our timeline and also welcome, again, cosponsors. Would appreciate that very much.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman, Counselor Ramos. And I would just ask councillors to please keep your comments as condensed as possible.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief. Just want to say thank you to my colleague, Counselor Letterman, for bringing this to the forefront once again. This is a conversation that started years ago in a cold basement at a union hall. And it was a meeting that was also attended by our former colleague, Counselor Gomez. And the three of us have really been, you know, pushing for this for many years. And I'm glad that it's finally on the agenda for a vote and I hope that my colleagues will support it this evening. Many of you may remember that I, prior to my election to the General Court, I was actually an organizer with the North Atlantic States Regional Council of Carpenters and part of my job was to investigate and to identify companies that were not necessarily meeting the let the criteria for, for local ordinances and state legislation. And there were a lot of, it was an eye-opening experience, to say the least. I saw how easy it is for companies to cheat their workers out of the pay that they are entitled to. I saw how easy it was for them to cheat even on public projects, projects and that we would not expect them to be able to do this. There was actually a complaint filed on a job where they were building offices for the, for Homeland Security. And, and there was waste theft on that job by one of the contractors. There was a contractor who was well-known for cheating that actually secured a bid on an FBI building. And again, it, projects that you would not even think that people can get away with cheating, they did. And, and it happens everywhere. It happens around us, whether we realize it or not. And it could be simple things such as not paying the proper wages, intentionally misclassifying workers in order to pay them less than what they're entitled to and less than what the job requires or not paying overtime, which is against law. So there are several ways for companies to cheat their workers out of way, out of their wages and, and I'm glad that we're going on record to say that we're not going to, that we're not going to contribute to this problem and we are going to protect the taxpayers by passing this ordinance tonight.
Counselor Ramos, Counselor Brown?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to make sure that I'm added as a co-sponsor and I want to commend my colleagues on their continual effort on this matter. This is an issue that definitely needs to be addressed. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. Counselor Edwards?
Very briefly, I'd just like to thank all the, my colleagues that have been involved with this, this proposed ordinance and the members of the Carpenters Union and, and past councillors who have worked on this issue as well. Former city councillor and present state rep Bud Williams had a lot to do with the foundation in which the REO operates, as well as Tim Rook, I believe, was also a former councillor, Tim Rook. And to Tim Allen and the members of the REO Committee, much work and this is, is being put into these efforts to fundamental fairness. This is not a complicated issue in the sense that it's just about fairness. This is about holding contractors and people responsible for doing what they claim, what they're supposed to do, which is to pay an agreed amount to the employees that there's, that they contracted with. You are due what you, your pay, you're due your entire pay. And so it's not complicated. Us passing this doesn't cost a tax for any more money and in fact, it puts more money into the community because people are able to earn what they have contracted to get. And so I encourage all my colleagues to support this passage of first step tonight.
Counselor Edwards, Counselor Davila?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do, this is about the Counselor Edwards, you're saying this all fairness and I respectfully ask that I add it as a co-sponsor to this ordinance.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. Are there any other questions from the council? All right, seeing none, can I please, at this time, entertain a motion to pass first step of the ordinance?
So moved. Second.
Right, motion made by Counselor Letterman, seconded by Counselor Edwards. Madam Clerk, can you please call the role on passing first step?
On passing first step. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams?
Yes, the first step is passed. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is an amendment to chapter one seventy-eight by inserting a new section and amending chapter one.
Madam Clerk, is there anyone present to speak to this item? Again, I will ask, is anyone present to speak to this item? Madam Clerk, do we have an idea what this might be pertaining to? If, if not, I will certainly entertain a motion to either continue or send this back to Subcommittee.
Mr. President, I, I was going to say, I submitted this item, this is the gasoline, gasoline station regulation. I believe Counselor Ramos is the sponsor. It's titled under the ordinance title, so it doesn't give a good description. So I apologize if it looks a little vague. But I believe this is the ordinance that was seeking to add a regulation to gas stations for the sale to, for usage with unauthorized motor vehicles, meaning off-road type ATV vehicles, you know, people looking to gas up at those stations. And this was seeking to add a prohibition to that. And I don't know if Counselor Ramos wanted to go into further detail about, you know, why we were looking to do that.
Thank you, Attorney Moore. Counselor Ramos, would you have a comment?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was, my apologies, I was unaware that this was on the agenda for this evening. I know that the, the ordinance was under review by the Law Department. Thank you for, Attorney Moore, for, for your work on, on the ordinance. I would ask that this be sent to committee, Mr. President, so that we can further discuss this. But basically, the, the intent of the ordinance, you know, we've all, going into summer months, we've all received complaints and we've all seen these off-road vehicles and dirt bikes. They are out of control in our city and it's not just the city of Springfield, they're all over. It, you know, particularly around urban areas, they're, they're all going through the same thing. And it's not just a nuisance, it's not just annoying, it's, it is a public safety issue that affects everyone who's on the road. And we've already had some very serious incidents, even deaths associated with illegal operation of dirt bikes and off-road, off-highway vehicles. And, and we have to do whatever we can to put a stop to this and to make it as difficult as possible for these, for these dirt bikers to operate illegally in our city. The concept behind it is, is actually, the idea came from the state of Connecticut. There are several municipalities in Connecticut that have already approved this to make it more difficult for illegal dirt bikers to get, get fuel. Essentially to, it prevents, it prohibits gas stations from selling gasoline to off, to anyone on a dirt bike or an off-highway vehicle unless the vehicle is on a trailer. Again, discouraging illegal operation of these dirt bikes and off-highway vehicles. So I want, I would like to have a conversation in Subcommittee, you know, it's, it's late in the evening. I, I think that this would, this might take up a little bit more time than we wanted to. So I want to give an opportunity for councillors to get their questions answered in, in committee so that we can bring it up for a vote at the next regular meeting. So I make a motion to send this to the Public Safety Subcommittee.
Second.
Counselor Ramos is seconded by Counselor Allen. I'm just as a kind of some comic relief, a dirt bike. Literally, I was talking, Counselor Ramos in protest, I'm sure. So we, it's actually been properly seconded. Now, Madam Clerk, can you please call the role on sending this back to Subcommittee?
On sending the item to committee. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gomez? Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams?
Yes, the item has been sent back to Subcommittee. Madam, call the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is a special act, an act relative to the filling of vacancies in the offices of the City Council in the city of Springfield.
Present to speak to this item? Counselor Davila?
Thank you, Mr. President. Fellow councillors, myself and Counselor Fenton are submitting a special act titled of, not relatively to the filling of vacancies. What we are aiming to do here is to really give back the power to where it truly belongs and that is to the people. I'm going to give you some of the highlights of the, of the act and possibly Counselor Fenton can fill in more of the legalist aspects thereafter. Some of the highlights of this proposed vacancy is one, it applies only to the war seats. Number two, it, the city clerk has to notify the election commissioner when there's a vacancy within fifteen days of the vacancy occurring. If there are two hundred and ten days or more from the, from Election Day, the, we will hold a special election. If there's two hundred and ten days or less, the seat will, will remain vacant. If there's no more than two candidates for the special election, the special election will be canceled. In other words, if there's not two plus one in the race, the special election will be canceled. And the most important, one, another important aspect of this vacancy act is that it shall take effect immediately. We, we all had the recent pleasure of appointing one of our colleagues, Counselor Gomez, who's here with us, who's a great addition to the council. But again, this is just giving the power where it truly belongs and that is to the people. I personally believe that campaigning, there's only one way to sit on that chair, on the chair, and that is to campaign that gets you to understand the district, the needs of the district and for the people to get to know you and get your ideas and your proposals. What I'm hoping that we can do today is have a discussion on this and then send it to committee so we can air out any more, any possible wrinkles. And I'm hoping that we can pass this finally by the end of May. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. Counselor Ramos?
Mr. President, I have to abstain from the vote for this item.
All right, Madam Clerk, can you please note that? Abstained. Counselor Fenton?
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Davila did a great job of summarizing. Just to highlight, I drafted this probably about eight years ago and it's passed the city council twice unanimously. It never went anywhere, anywhere with the General Court because it is a special act, so it requires approval of the Massachusetts General Court. Thankfully, we have two recent colleagues and friends out there that might be able to help us this time around. And the, the goal is to do as Counselor Davila stipulated. The only thing that I would correct him on is, is he said that the election would be canceled if there was two plus one for the election. That's not right. It's, it's if there's less than two people who get certified for the ballot, then the election would be, would be canceled. Meaning, if there's only one candidate, we're not going to have an election for just one person. But if it's two or more, then we would go through our ordinary process. So hopeful we can get this in committee to make sure that people have appropriate time to consider it and then send it to the General Court. And yeah, we've got many former colleagues there. Former Counselor Williams, current Counselor Ramos, former Counselor Gomez and Puplo, there's a lot. So we will look forward to working with them. And with that, I would make a motion that we refer this matter to committee, Mr. President.
Right, there's a motion on the floor prior to getting a second. Counselor Letterman, are you, are you fine?
I'm good.
All right, Lord Fenton has made a motion.
Second, second.
Seconded by Counselor Allen. Madam Clerk, can you, Counselor Brown on the motion?
I had a statement. I don't know if I should wait or...
Yeah, I'm quite sure there'd be an opportunity during committee if you'd like to. A councillor, again, Counselor Fenton has made the motion seconded by Counselor Allen. Madam Clerk, can you please call the role?
On the motion to committee, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos?
Abstained.
I'm sorry, I apologize. Abstained. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams?
Yes, the matter has been sent to committee. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is entitled Anti-Asian Racism Resolution.
Is there anyone present to speak to this item? Counselor Hurst?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be as, as brief as possible. As I know, we're approaching our ten o'clock deadline and I also know that the majority of people that are, that were viewing us are probably now watching the national championship. The, I appreciate my colleagues unanimously co-sponsoring this resolve. You may be wondering how did I get it out to you so quickly after the incident that occurred or the senseless act of hate and violence that occurred in Georgia? And that is because this has been on my mind for quite some time. And it got to the point where I was extremely tired of waking up and hearing repeatedly these acts of senseless violence happening in our Asian community. And so I felt as though... And so I felt as though something had to be done, and it just so happened that I had this resolve written prior. Uh, just a couple of days prior to what occurred in Georgia, and so I felt at that point in time it was necessary. Uh, to bring this to the, the full council uh for passage and approval. Uh, I will also note that there were a number of councilors who spoke out uh against and condemning uh hate of all kinds. And certainly hate in the Asian and Pacific Islander uh community uh at an anti-Asian hate rally just a, a couple of weeks prior. And so I appreciate uh your support for that. What I will do uh is just, I will not read the entire resolution, but I'll just read what it is that we are calling for. Uh, considering that we have unanimous support from the entire council. And so it reads now therefore be it resolved that the Springfield City Council calls on public officials to condemn. Anti-Asian sentiment in any form recognizes that the health and safety of all Americans, no matter their background. Must be of utmost priority, encourages the Springfield Police Department. To investigate and document all credible reports of hate crimes and threats against our Asian-American community. And finally ask the Springfield Public Schools to investigate and document all credible reports of bullying incidents. And threats against our Asian-American students, so again, I appreciate the unanimous support from the council. Uh, it was hard for me to believe that there were so many incidents that occurred right here in Massachusetts. Uh, and so I thought it was necessary to bring this before you all to pass it, and I'm happy that it, that hopefully it will pass unanimously. Uh, from our members of the Springfield City Council, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Hurst, uh, Counselor Whitfield?
I'd be very brief, I just want to thank my colleague, um, Counsel Hurst for writing such a thoughtful resolution. Um, hate is hate and it's ugly, no matter what race, creed, religion. No matter what, hate is disgusting and, you know, it gotta be abolished. Like, we cannot live in a society of hate, we need to love everybody no matter what, so I thank you. And I, and I gladly support um this resolution.
Thank you, Counsel, Counselor Letterman.
Thank you, Mr. President, I do know we, we still have some agenda items, but um, I don't think we should allow this agenda item to pass. Without the, the proper, uh, without the proper dialogue on it, because uh, as Counselor Hurst pointed out. This is extremely serious and extremely important item for us to take up this evening, and I just want to lift up. Uh, for those who, who weren't able to attend uh the rally that Counsel Hurst spoke of, uh, some of the comments that were made. Uh, by a, a former schoolteacher and current PhD candidate whose name was Leanne. Um, who spoke about her experience as what she described as just sort of an average, everyday person in the Asian community. And the pain that Leanne spoke of, um, she described it making her feel helpless, making her feel like there wasn't something that could be done. And she described herself as just an everyday. And I just wanted to, to lift that up because I think that her comments um were, were what really resonated with a lot of us that were standing there. And what we, many of us said at that, at that meeting um was not only do elected officials need to speak up. But everyday people need to speak up too, and everybody can be heard and have their voice uh contribute to pushing back against. Uh, as Counsel Whitfield said, this disgusting hate rhetoric uh that we see, because it doesn't always start. Uh, with the type of attacks uh that occurred in Georgia, as Counsel Hurst mentioned. It, it starts with a Facebook comment, it starts with that insidious underbelly that can exist. And so I just want to, I want to thank everybody that attended that rally, it was important for elected officials. Uh, who were able to be there, to be there and to stand in solidarity, um, but it was also uplifting to see. So many individuals from across our community come together, I just want to thank all the organizers of that event. And appreciate Counsel Hurst bringing this forward.
Counselor Letterman, Counselor Brown?
Yes, I also want to thank uh Counselor Hurst for uh bringing this to the forefront. Um, and the work that he's done, um, it was a great event. I also um commend him, because a lot of times I think that. Um, with hate, the first thing we try to do is hate ourselves. Um, I find if the first thing we choose to do to combat hate is to break down and hate. Um, we should rethink our process. Um, so I do commend him, I commend his work on the constant fight. Um, and uh, I just thank him for it, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Brown, Counselor Allen?
Uh, thanks, Mr. President, just want to thank Counselor Hurst for bringing this to us, hate in all its forms in any form. Um, and against anybody or any, any group of people is awful, and we should always stand against it, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Allen, are there any other councilors? All right, being that, I will also just say very quickly that um, I commend Counselor Hurst for bringing this. To the table, it certainly is a timely resolution, and uh the Stop the Asian Hate Ra- Rally that we all attended, or most of us attended. Uh, was probably one of the most beautiful displays of honoring lost lives that I've, I've had the pleasure. Or, you know, what, wouldn't, obviously would like to be there. Um, but it, it, the way they did that was, it was beautifully done, so the folks that organized that event also deserve a, a top shout out uh as well, so. Uh, thank you all, uh, Madam Clerk, can you please call the role in accepting the resolution?
On accepting the resolution. Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield?
Absolutely.
Absolutely, Counsel Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Dabila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Williams?
Yes, the resolution is approved, Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item?
The next item on the agenda is a resolution for Officer Ruben Barrero.
All right, prior to offering the floor to someone to take this up, uh, do we have Officer Ruben on the call this evening?
Uh, Mr. President, if I may, uh, apparently, uh, no, he's not on the, on the floor this evening. I asked that we continue this uh to a later time.
All right, I would like to put that in form of a motion?
Yes.
All right, uh, can I have a second, please?
Second.
Great, uh, Madam, uh, the motion. Counsel Dabila seconded by Counselor Whitfield, Madam Clerk, can you please? Continuing?
On continuing the item, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield? Yes, yes, Counsel Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Dabila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Williams?
Yeah, the item has been. Or can you call the next item on the?
The next item on the agenda is for a historic district at forty-one Oakland Street.
Counselors, this item is on second and third step, uh, is there anyone present?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes, Steve Hayes? I live in Springfield, I'm the founding director of the Drama Studio that owns the uh facility at forty-one Oakland. I'd like to address really three things in supporting this effort. To create a single-building historic district, first is that it is the work designed by. Uh, an architect named Guy Kirkham in, who designed Mass Mutual. Our next-door neighbor, the Forest Park Middle uh Library and um Forbes and Wallace. And it was designed to honor the home church in Cheshire, England of um William Pinchon. Number two is, I think, having a historic district, a, a single-building one only can enhance. The quality of life in um, in the Forest Park area and in the city as a whole. In preserving and strengthening that particular part of Oakland Street, and third. Its ability to protect the facade and its historical nature is essential for the studio to. Ap- uh, apply to the Community Preservation Fund uh for grants for restoration. So those three things I would attest are the, the main reasons for this.
Hey, thank you, Hayes, uh, at this time, do we have any councilors who wish to ask questions? Again, I will ask if any councilors at this time have questions. Counselor Fenton?
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Hayes, when did the solar panels go on the roof? About uh, two years ago. Okay. And the Historic District Commission is okay with that? And the approval of the Historic District, I know typically. This panels that are visible from the street like that are not an acceptable improvement to residential structures that are in. Historic districts typically. It has not been a problem with the Historical Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Fenton, are there any other councilors with questions at this time? Are there any other councils with questions at this time, all right?
Yeah, yes, Mr. President, just a quick one.
Yes, I also have my hand up.
Yeah, me, me too.
Oh, there's several, uh, Counsel Walsh?
Um, um, i- if you just called on. If you just called on Counsel Allen, he can go first, and then I'll go after him.
Perfect, Counselor Allen?
Uh, my question was quick, and how long have you owned that building, has the drama studio been in there, and? How long have you um, oh, owned it or been part of it?
We've been there leasing for about thirty-three years, and then we purchased it in two thousand seventeen.
Thank you.
Uh, Counsel Walsh?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, and, and thank you, Steve Hayes, for creating the Drama Studio and all. The wonderful productions you've brought to the city and the opportunities for young children, they were talking earlier about a. Youth poet laureate, but you certainly have had a lot of youth actors go through the drama studio. So, uh, I know that you have other plans, or I'm, I believe I attended a meeting when you were talking about doing other things. To this property, so you are not concerned that this will re-. This historic district will restrict you in any ways to fulfilling what you really want to do there?
No, um, um, catering, the. We plan to use the building and respect its facade. Um, and it serves our purposes very nicely by, by providing classrooms and performance spaces. By the way, this property, this district does not include the former parsonage, which.
Okay.
Came later, and that is perhaps what you're thinking of.
Right, I was thinking about parking.
Yeah, so we're not exactly sure what we're going to do with the parsonage, we love the sto- it's right now a storage space for us. But um, it may be useful in different ways in the future, but it's not part of this district.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Walsh, Counselor Gomez?
Uh, yes, uh, talk about. Uh, restoring and grants monies, uh, where does grants money come from and how much? You estimate that you're going to needing in grants to bring this property uh in shape?
Right now, the. Not including the acquisition costs and what we've spent to date, but we need to uh raise about. Uh, six hundred and fifty thousand to restore it, that includes um sprinkling the building. Inside, uh, restoring the exterior, and the church that owned it really put no money into it. And the um, a lot of the wood trim has rotted. So, there's that, painting it. Um, and then we want to install an elevator in order that we can make the building totally accessible. So it's about six hundred and fifty thousand. And the sources for that will be um, private donors. We have already received one grant from the Community Preservation Fund for a um alarm system. And then the state, through the Arts Council, Massachusetts Council for the Arts, um, has a. Facilities fund that we would be very eligible for. To help restore and improve buildings for arts organizations.
Thank you.
Sorry about that, thank you, Counselor, uh, Counsel Dabila?
I thank you, Mr. President, uh, just to uh remind my, my colleagues that uh, the Forest Park Civic Association uh voted to support this project. Uh, it's a building that is worth saving, uh, it represents the simplicity of Forest Park, its openness. Uh, and it also has a direct uh uh relation to the founder of Springfield, Mr. William Pinchon. Uh, so the Forest Park Civic Association supports this, um, we already first, first step, and I just my hope that we can. Uh, fa- pass second and third step uh tonight. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you, Counsel Dabila, are there any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, I will now entertain a motion to pass second and third step at this time.
So move.
All right, uh, motion being by Counselor Allen seconded?
Second.
Seconded by uh Counselor Dabila, Madam Clerk, can you please call the role on passing second and third step this evening?
On passing second and third step, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman?
Yeah.
Yes. Counsel Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ramos?
Sorry, yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Dabila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Williams?
Yes, the item has a second and third step, this time, can I please introduce the motion to. We need to see if we can take these items up in one step?
So move.
Walsh seconded by Counselor Dabila, Madam Clerk, can you please call the role and invoke?
On invoking Rule twenty-two C, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman?
Yeah.
Yes, Counsel Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Da- I'm sorry, Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Dabila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Williams?
Yes, uh, Madam Clerk, please call the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is for four seventy-seven State Street, it's the creation of Gun Block Local Store District.
Right, and councilors, this is still on for first step, as no one was present to speak uh on this item at the March fifteenth meeting. So I will ask again, is there anyone present to speak on this item today?
Uh, Chris Russell, representing Develop Springfield, I'm here to speak on the item.
Thanks, Chris, and could you just please state your address for the record?
Sure, uh, my personal address or our business address?
Personal, business.
Uh, business is thirteen thirty-one Main Street, Springfield.
Thank you.
Proving District has been uh managing Develop Springfield for the past two years. Uh, as uh four seventy-seven State Street, uh, I'm sure most of you do know, uh, but if you don't, it is the oldest. Standing commercial. As four seventy-seven State Street, I'm sure most of you do know, but if you don't, it is the oldest standing commercial building in the city of Springfield. It sits prominently across from the Armory Site. And it's approximately one hundred ninety years old, built in approximately eighteen thirty. It's on the National Register of Historic Places. Develop Springfield has just finally finished a stabilization to that building to ensure that it stays with us for many, many more years. We're currently working with a developer that wants to complete that project. But as a condition of funding that we received to help with the preservation of the building through CPA funding, it was required of us to ask for this single site designation, historic designation, so.
All right, thank you, Chris. Are there any questions for Chris from the council at this time? Again, I will ask, are there any from the council at this time? Right, seeing none, can I please entertain a motion to pass first step on this item?
Oh, moved.
All right, motion made by Counselor Allen, seconded?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Letterman, I believe that was. Madam, can you please call the role in passing first step?
On passing first step, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman?
Yeah.
Yes, Counsel Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Corrine?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Williams?
Yes, the ordinance has passed first step. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can you please call the next?
The next item on the agenda is amending chapter one ten, section one ten dash fourteen, puppy mills.
All right, counselors, is this item being taken out of committee this evening?
Yes.
Right, Counselor Edwards, feel free to speak to it if you'd like.
Thank you. I know it's late, and I want to apologize to everybody who has been waiting. This was the business of the city, but this is an important issue, and to me, this is as important as any of the other issues that was discussed tonight. And I hope my colleagues agree. First of all, so I want to thank my colleagues who are also co-sponsoring this bill. This passed unanimously first step a couple of weeks ago, and it is time for us to finalize this legislation. This ordinance will buy under retail sale of dogs, cats, and rabbits in the city of Springfield from commercial entities. And the, there, we, I'm assuming that you have received a similar number of emails, calls, and letters, both in support and in opposition to this ordinance. There are people here that will be easily, that will be eager to speak, therefore, and I'm probably sure against the ordinance, but we've had plenty of time to vet it. I'm not going to beat this dead horse, or in this case, dead dog or cat. But I'm just going to simply ask that at this point that we could hear from a couple of people who have been instrumental in helping me and my colleagues get us to this point. And I'd like to start with somebody who I think we should have great respect and appreciation for her comments and for possibly the comments of her staff. We give deference to all our department heads as being the experts on the issues that are brought before us. So if the head of DPW was here and he was talking about plowing, we listen intently to his comments and we give much respect to what he has to say. We do the same when TJ in finance or his representatives are here or any other, when the police commissioner or anybody else that we describe as a department head, and most recently, we probably have heard more from about the great work and due diligence of our health commissioner. So at this point, if out of respect, and I was aware of to kind of help facilitate and perhaps get everybody on the same page. I'd like to ask Pam Peoples, the head of Thomas J. O'Connor Center, to share her comments. She has been instrumental with working directly with myself and her Hannah and the rest of her staff. We've also been working in collaboration with the premier nonprofit animal center in the city of Springfield, which is Dankin Center, which is privately run. And I believe I'd like to shout out also to Cheryl Becker, and who has been instrumental in teaching me so much about this industry. I had a conversation earlier today with one of my colleagues, and when I started to describe the leasing of dogs, they were quite surprised that, you know, I had never heard of that, and I think many of you did not know that there was a practice of leasing dogs going on in the country. And in fact, at one time, we worried that was also going on in the city of Springfield. So at this point, if there's not any objections, I'd like for Pam Peoples, the head of TGAO, the publicly funded entity that deals with abuse and the care of animals in the city of Springfield to speak at this time. Mr. President?
There's no objection. Yes, Pam?
Bob, you're muted, Pam.
Said I wouldn't do that. Thanks all, thanks for having me. Yeah, we're this, this amendment to the chapter one ten animal ordinances really would just help Springfield to really become progressive and take a step towards being even more humane community. And it would help stop the pipeline that is really from often, I guess, use the term puppy mills to retail pet stores. We know that the vast majority, nearly one hundred percent of pet stores that sell dogs, cats, rabbits, those animals, dogs, cats, and rabbits are often not humanely sourced. We use the term puppy mills a lot. Certainly, that can be one phrase for it, but it, no matter where, really, that pet stores say they're getting their animals when you're selling thousands and thousands or hundreds and hundreds even. You, there, it is not possible to produce that many animals in a humane fashion and have it be profitable, which bottom line, this is about profit for the retail pet industry. We would like to encourage what is just really a more socially acceptable model. And that is turned out to be more profitable for that nearly, again, nearly one hundred percent of the pet stores that have followed a model that does not have the sale of live animals. Instead, they adopt different type of services that are in demand, the supplies for animals. And often, many of them will partner for adoption events or fundraising events with local nonprofits or municipal animal controls and communities. There's currently seven cities and towns in Massachusetts that have adopted this ordinance. And we would join nearly four hundred from across the country. So this is something that, really, the time has come. This is just a socially unacceptable and outdated model that retail pet stores that are selling dogs and cats continue to follow. Unfortunately, there are fewer and fewer of them each year.
Thank you, Pam. Counsel Edwards, if you are all set, I can turn it over to the counselors that might have any questions at this time. Counsel Brown?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a quick statement. I want to thank Counselor Edwards and his work. And I also want to thank Pam and her hard work. And I'd be remiss if my two babies, Lola and Pepper, also want to say thank you, guys. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Counselor Brown, Counsel Whitfield.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Counsel Edwards, for your hard work on this and doing the research and getting the background information and getting all the people together to fight for us, right? I have one question because I kept hearing it in the other meeting about grandfathering in the puppy palace. I don't know what that's about. Are they grandfathered in? Are they not? I don't know.
Actually, this ordinance, I've been, Mr. President, may I?
Yes.
I've been very specific in crafting this in a way where if you read it, it doesn't mention puppy pals, nor doesn't mention any other retail pet store that operates in Springfield or around Springfield. None of the big chains sell these animals anyway, so that should be a reflection of where things progressive retail animals has moved to. It's an outdated model that exists in the city of Springfield, but I have not specifically mentioned any retail establishment by name as little as I could. Obviously, there is an establishment that operates in the city of Springfield. This ordinance will take effect ninety days from its passage. So anybody who is operating a retail establishment in the city of Springfield will have ninety days to change their business model. I think many of you have heard about the loss of jobs. I've heard, you know, that we're causing somebody to lose a business. What we're doing is forcing somebody to change a business model, which is common in retail, and this is a retail establishment. Things, when ordinances or laws are made, they make somebody have to do something different or change their operation. And just the fact that Leach mirrors doesn't exist anymore, Circuit City doesn't exist anymore, Sears is on its way out the door. These models have to evolve, or they just do not, they just can't survive. It's not my job, and I would suggest to you, all of you, that it's not our job as the council to do anything intentionally with the specific purpose of attacking one entity. But if, you know, the reality is, is that once this becomes illegal, they just have to change. They're not going to be grandfathered in. I, they will have ninety days to change, to close if they choose to. They can continue to operate. You may have heard from them and from their representatives about the work they do as a rescue. There is nothing in this that stops them from continuing to do their work as a rescue. And there are ways for them to operate a rescue where they can still be profitable doing that type of work. This does not stop people who want to breed their own animals or be our established breeders, private breeders, to work and operate within the boundaries of the city. This only addresses the retail sale. So I apologize for kind of rambling, but specifically, there is no language in here that allows for the grandfathering of an extension of the enforcement of this ordinance. In ninety days, the sale, retail sale by a commercial entity would cause for a fine that would be enforced, I believe, by either the law department or by TGAO of three hundred dollars per violation.
I appreciate that.
Excuse me, who's, can you, Katie?
Yes, hi, sorry. Is this just for counselors to speak, or is there allowed for public comment?
No, no, no public comment for this item.
Okay.
I know it's past ten o'clock, and Attorney Moore, I think he wanted to add, Counselor President.
I'm sorry, I'll be very quick with the concept of grandfathering. It's important to remember when people talk about grandfathering, it's talking about something that's very specific to chapter forty A in the zoning act. So the concept of grandfathering is about land use regulation through a city's zoning ordinance powers. In this case, you're not doing that. You know, you guys are not doing something that would take a pre-existing non-conforming use and allow it to be grandfathered in to the new regulations you just passed. Like Counsel Edwards correctly stated, this is a regulation of a business, and it would take effect when the council chooses to make it effective. There wouldn't be a cause for grandfathering because it's not a zoning issue. It's just really that simple. So that's all I got.
Thank you, Attorney Moore, Counsel Letterman.
I wasn't done, Counselor.
Sorry, Counsel.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to say to Counselor Edwards and Attorney Moore, thank you for the explanation. I think that is very important. The information that you shared with us, because I heard the grandfathering a lot, and so I wasn't clear on what was happening. I didn't mean to mention any business specifically. But you know, when the laws change, we have to conform to them, and we know that during COVID, it happened so much with so many industries. Even with us, we had to be locked down. We had to leave our businesses. We had to work from home. We had to adjust. And, you know, and I think that they need to, whatever business it is, need to adjust as well. So thank you. If I'm not a co-sponsor, please add me, and I appreciate the hard work, Counsel Edwards.
Thank you, Counsel Whitfield, Counsel Letterman.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just briefly wanted to reiterate what I had said at the last meeting. Certainly, Counselor Edwards and Director Peoples have highlighted the animal welfare aspect, which is essential for us to consider here. I also want to lift up the consumer protection aspect of this, which is one that is very dear to me. As Pam had mentioned, this business model of a retail pet store is outdated. And the reason why it is outdated is because it is not possible to operate it profitably from what we have seen in any community.
Be prepared for a lawsuit.
By any, by any, Mr. President, I'm sorry, Mr. President, I'm sorry, can we? In the Zoom?
Give me one second, please.
So as I, as I was saying, Mr. President, I really think there's, there's deep concern about the business model in any community by any actor that leaves it prone essentially to individuals who mean well, but are unfortunately impacted then by the acquisition of an animal that may end up being sick, that may end up not being what was represented. And so with that respect, I think that is what has driven it in other communities as well, and I would just, I would just lift that aspect up for individuals as we consider where we'll be voting this evening. We are talking about animals that are in the thousands of dollars in some retail locations, and so these are not small investments that, that individuals may, again, be meaning well when they go out to purchase, but then, as we've seen from the reports, and again, just in the business model in general, we've seen that issue. So that is why I'll be supporting the ordinance in addition to all the stated reasons that others have said, and appreciate very much Attorney Moore and Counselor Edwards stepping forward.
Thank you, Counsel Letterman, Counselor Davila.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to make sure, I do believe in the last meeting that I asked to be artists of a cosponsor. If I didn't, I would like to reiterate that now to respectfully add me as a cosponsor, and I just leave it at this. Like Muhammad Gandhi saying, the greatness of a society is going to be measured by how it treats its weakest members. And definitely, as I mentioned before, the four-legged children are definitely in that category. So I will be supporting this as well. And Counsel Edwards, thank you for a fantastic job, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Davila, Counselor Allen.
Merely put my hand up to thank Attorney Moore and particularly Counselor Edwards for a great job on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Allen, Counselor Fenton.
Mr. President, it just, somebody on the Zoom interrupted and said, please be prepared for lawsuit. I'd like that person to identify themselves.
They are no longer on the call, Counselor.
Did they identify themselves before they said that?
I don't believe they did.
Mr. President, if I may?
Yes.
Thank you. I did, I do believe Counsel Fenton, that I saw a screen name of Caterie. I do believe that he might be the owner of the establishment that has been measured, that has been mentioned throughout this whole process, sir.
Was she invited into the zone?
I do not know how she got in, sir.
Yeah, I'm not too sure, Counselor Fenton. I'm going to have to work with Zoom. I mean, I'm sorry, focus Springfield after to understand.
Well.
Security. Mr. President, if I may, I do believe she's still on the call, sir.
No, it was a person who identified as Erin. I see, I saw that name flash, and that person is no longer a part of the room. So Counselor Fenton, I will turn it back to you.
Well, I'd like to hear what they have to say if they think they're going to do us.
Mr. President? Can I interrupt? That was Erin. She's involved with the Puppy Place, and one of her colleagues, Katie, is still on the phone, is on the call, I believe.
Would you like me to speak? Sorry, Katie, would you like me to speak?
I can make the exception, but I have to say that we've been consistent with allowing, just newly allowing folks for special permits and zone changes to provide testimony. So I'm not comfortable allowing public testimony for an item as such when I did not, we did not have the advertisement for folks who are both on both sides of the issue to provide comment. Okay, that's.
That's fine. I just wanted, I just thought you wanted clarification, but that's, that's totally fine.
That's fine, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Fenton, Counselor Edwards.
Well, I, to that point, though, I believe Attorney Moore is very, has given consideration, and this the comment was an expectation. It wasn't an expectation that it would be made in this public meeting, but there is an expectation, and of course, this is a country based on the right to sue, and litigation is a common occurrence when we do the business of the city. And litigation is a common occurrence when we do the business of the city. I believe Attorney Moore has vetted this, and it's been vetted. And across, as, we're not the only community in Massachusetts doing. This is not new law for us to deal with. It's been done all over the country. So I'm not concerned about the threat of lawsuit. If that is what they choose to do, then it is what they choose to do, and their money would probably be better spent trying to create a new business model. But they're, they're welcome to do what they need to do. To be frank and honest with you, I have the utmost confidence in not only Attorney Moore, but the entire staff of the Springfield Law Department. And though, you know, there's been times when I have not agreed with some things that have, you know, issues, I will not question the competency of the lawyers that represent this, this body.
Thank you, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Ramos.
Yeah, Mr. President, just in an effort to avoid similar incident from happening in the future. You know, I think we, we had to have a process for looking at who was actually attending the meeting. And if they are not part of the agenda, then people should be removed at the beginning of the meeting, Mr. President. Just, just a suggestion.
Yes, Counselor Ramos, that is typical. But sometimes for myself, it is difficult to tell who is speaking on what particular item. And as you know, we had over 25 items tonight. So, you know, it's not always a perfect system, but we do make that effort. Counselor, was there another counselor that had their hand up?
He was.
Counselor Davila?
I do, Mr. President. I just have to briefly express my displeasure of what just happened. My vote is not going to be influenced by the threat of a lawsuit. You know, I, I, I'm not happy with the comment that this, apparently, this Aaron person did. I find it extremely inappropriate, and my vote is not going to be shaped one way or another by a threat. Thank you.
Thank you. President, I, I only think I'd like, they asked is that we can do a second and third step, that we take the vote to pass this tonight, move it on and get the clock starting on creating a more safer environment for both the consumer and the animals that exist in the city of Springfield.
Right.
And I put that in a form of a motion.
All right, we have a motion properly seconded, but Counselor Fenton, are you all right?
Counselor. Yeah, Mr. President, Mr. President, and I, if, if I may, just on the motion to approve, and I'd like to support it, I just, I'd like to hear from Attorney Moore briefly on what risk, if any, we would be exposed to by ordering, or really by prohibiting what is currently a legal activity for a business that is in operation. I'm just, I know that Counselor Edwards said he's looked at it, but I would appreciate it if you could share that with me, because I haven't heard that analysis yet.
Attorney Moore, sure.
Sure, I'll try to be as concise as possible. So a few of the points that were made are important to remember at this stage, which is, this is a, a set of new regulations that have been rolled out across the country. So there are some, there is some limited body of case law that we can look at to see what courts have decided when these have been challenged. Unfortunately, you know, the overwhelming majority of that ends up being from out of state. So we don't necessarily have a controlling case in Massachusetts that we can really point to where you can say, well, here's your bright line standard for what you can and can't do in this situation. What we do have is we have some guidance from the Attorney General's Office that's very recent and actually quite helpful. There was a bylaw that was enacted in the town of Holliston that was challenged, and it was brought to the Attorney General's Office for approval. And there was a provision that was struck from that ordinance that we struck from ours to make sure that we were going to be compliant with some of the concerns the Attorney General had raised about one particular provision. That provision related to the seizure of animals that were found in violation of, of the ordinance, and that's not included in our provision or our particular draft. So that leaves us with sort of what they discussed within that decision. One of the issues that they looked at was the issue of preemption. So that might be, I think, where Counselor Fenton was, was kind of going, which is to say the state does have legislation that addresses the sale and practices of, of animal sales in the Commonwealth and the retail level. There's a number of statutes that discuss how that's done and how the licensure of those businesses operate. This ordinance, you have to look at it and say, well, you know, when we do a preemption analysis, we're looking for a few things. We're looking to see, you know, did the state comprehensively legislate on an issue and expressly talk about the lack of the local authority to do anything on that subject matter? Do we see that the ordinance that we passed is clearly frustrating the purpose of the state law, such that it creates this, what they call a sharp conflict within the courts? And, you know, the Attorney General actually looked at that exact question in this decision. I recommend the counselors take a look at it. It came from February 24th of this year. And it directly discussed as the issue of preemption and basically states, it's, the, the ordinance that was suggested in Holliston, which is extremely similar to ours, does not rise to the level of a sharp conflict. That, you know, in a sense, it works in coordination with the existing regulations. And there's an underlying suggestion from the legislature that the cities and towns have authority to take additional regulatory ma, regulatory measures, excuse me, to address this within their, their cities and towns as best they see fit, so long as, again, it doesn't run afoul of the authority created to the state under the state statute. So what I would say is that the enforcement of this ordinance is going to be a key piece to whether there is any grounds for any legal challenge. And that's something that we'll be carefully looking at when the time comes, if that time comes. There are some issues at the federal level that have been looked at by courts at the district appeals court level, which is, I think, quite helpful in this case. A lot of those centered around constitutional arguments about whether there was interference with the commerce clause, which was rejected on its face, whether there was an issue with the interference with due process rights, which was rejected on its face. And there were, there were some other issues like the, the Animal Care Act, for example, at the federal level, was a preemption issue that was raised in a federal case. But that was ultimately struck down as there's language in the act that specifically allows for this type of action from local communities. So what I will say is that, you know, we're gonna look at the enforcement of this, should the council vote to approve it, and we're gonna do our best to be in compliance with what the Attorney General has given for guidance, so that we avoid the issue of violating anybody's legal rights. And I think that's always the goal of the council. But based on what I've looked at so far, you know, I don't see that, that this ordinance carries a direct legal issue for us that's gonna present an immediate lawsuit. The idea that there's an outstanding lease agreement that's, that's in operation with any business that's currently in existence that may be affected by the passage of this ordinance. You know, just having a contractual agreement on the books with, between private parties doesn't excuse them from compliance with the law. I mean, if, if that were the case, then people would just be entering into contracts all over the place and saying, well, I don't have to comply with this law. I have a contract. You know, and that's not the way it works. So when you're operating a business, you're subject to changes within the law, and operating your business in accordance with those changes. So that's the way I think the council is approaching this, and it's a reasonable approach. Of course, you know, this compassion for all businesses who are trying to make money, but there's gotta be, you know, the rubber meat in the road in compliance with the law. And what you saw in certain communities across Mass, I think Boston was an example. I might be misstating that because I'm not really looking at any notes here. I'm just trying to remember this off the top of my head. They had done some kind of discussions offline with, with a business or two or however many it was that were affected. It was a small amount, and they sort of allowed a grace period for compliance. Or let's just say, you know, some kind of measures they used to work around to try to help the business get some relief based on probably some contractual obligations that they were faced with. So I don't know, again, if that's something the city wants to look at for any businesses that are affected by this particular ordinance. But that was an approach that seemed to work for both of the business and the city and avoided litigation. So that may be something that people want to look at. That's all I got.
Thank you, Tom.
Great. Thank you, Counselor Fenton. There was a motion made that was properly seconded. Are there, is there any other, other discussion, excuse me, on the motion? Any other discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none, Madam Clerk, can you please call parole to pass second and third step on this ordinance?
On second and third step, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes, and with no reservations.
Yes, and with no reservations. Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams?
Yes, the second and third steps have passed.
President, I wasn't recognized.
I'm sorry, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry.
All right, second and third steps have been passed. Can I please entertain a motion at this time to invoke a rule 22C to take these items up in one step?
Motion so made.
All right, motion made by Counselor Edwards, second.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Brown. Madam Clerk, can you please call the role on invoking 22C?
On invoking rule 22C, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran? Counselor Curran? Absent, Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams?
Yes. The ordinance has passed. Madam Clerk, can you please tell the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is amending chapter 385 entitled Speed Hunt Petitions.
All right. Is this item being taken out of committee at this time? Ramos?
Mr. President, just wondering whether or not we need a motion to continue the meeting, because we're past that 10 o'clock deadline.
Counselor Fenton, I'll pass this back your way to explain the 10 o'clock.
Oh, that. So I'm pretty sure Counselor Ramos, that it says that it has to be invoked. Let me see if I can find it.
Madam Clerk, do you have that on hand?
I don't, but from my memory, I believe it's that if anyone objects to going beyond 10:00 PM, then we do not go beyond 10:00 PM. So if there's no objections to us continuing, we can continue.
Exactly. That's how I remember it.
Yeah, that's my recollection too. And I could, I could pull it up, but by the time I do that, we'd already be wasting time getting in the meeting. I would like to make a motion that we continue this item again. I've been working with the police department and getting their comments, and hope by the next meeting that we'll have a document that we can entertain. So motion to continue.
All right, there's a motion on the floor by Counselor Fenton, seconded by Counselor.
Ross Allen.
Madam Clerk, can you please call the role on continuing this item?
Continuing the item, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman? Yes, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran?
Yes, and Madam Clerk, if I could, my phone powered down. Could I be marked yes for the last vote I missed?
Yes, no problem.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yeah.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams?
Yes, Madam Clerk, is there any other business before the council this evening?
There's no further business before the council.
All right, well, I appreciate you all for hanging in there. Got you out by 10:30, so it wasn't too bad tonight, but I appreciate.
Thank you, everyone.
Good job, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good night, everybody. Lord bless.